This December seventeen twenty sixteen, regular meeting number ten of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Sandberg Middle School Corettes under the direction of Ms. Jean Crowley.
(Singing) For the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the alchuric smell, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there; oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much, and thank you, parents, for bringing your talented students here tonight to entertain us. That was just perfect. We do have some folks I'd like to recognize in the audience. Former school board member Tina Hohn. There she is.[276.83][276.83](Applause). I also see Karen Corbett Sanders, incoming school board member from Mount Vernon.[283.12][283.12](Applause). Item 2.02, certification of closed-meeting compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on December seventeen, 2015, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Evans, seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? Darrenet Kofak, McElveen, Smith, Strauss, Evans, Hines, Moon, Reed, McLaughlin, and Velkoff. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Stork and Strauss. Schultz, I'm sorry. The motion passes. Oh, I also should definitely recognize Harris Latif. Where are you, Harris? There you go.[353.28][353.28](Applause). Harris is our former, just last year, our student member on the Board, and we miss him terribly across the pond as he's gone for school. But so nice to have you back for a visit. 2.03, announcements. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I call on Mr. Press for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board will be recognizing National Mentoring Month in January. National Mentoring Month highlights mentoring and the positive impact it can have on young lives. This month-long outreach campaign focuses national attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us, individuals, businesses, government agencies, schools, faith communities, and nonprofits, can work together to increase the number of mentors and assure brighter futures for our young people. Positive relationships between mentors and their mentees have been shown to encourage young people to stay in school, believe in themselves, and live up to their potential. National Mentoring Month marks its fifteenth anniversary in 2016 with the theme Mentoring in Real Life, encouraging citizens to volunteer as mentors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Item 2.04, a resolution honoring staff for lifesaving actions at Cooper Middle School. I call on Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. Those of us who are parents, grandparents, uncles, aunts, and teachers, there is nothing more important than, obviously, the safety of our children. And while our teachers and our staff, they work very hard to impart knowledge every day, occasionally they actually save the life of a child. This is a very special resolution honoring some of our faculty members at Cooper Middle School who indeed saved the life of one of our students. Whereas Cooper Middle School employees Heather Dorman, Dan Farney, Mike Hunter, Donna McAllister Long, Deanne Park, Leslie Saltis, Frank Stevens, and Scott Worthington went above and beyond the call of duty in responding to a medical emergency involving a middle school student in June of this last year. And whereas these eight individuals kept their composure during an extremely stressful situation and reacted quickly and deliberately as a team in using their cardiopulmonary resuscitation training and access to defibrillation devices to help save the life of a student who had just suffered a cardiac arrest during the course of the school day. And whereas these valued employees immediately sought professional medical attention and then ensured that medical personnel could safely and quickly reach the young student by communicating clear directions and engaging in crowd-control procedures to allow access while protecting others nearby from possible accidental injury. And whereas the doctors and nurses at the hospital credited the quick and appropriate actions of the Cooper Middle School staff in averting what would have been an unspeakable tragedy for the student's family, friends, and school community. And whereas these individuals and the Cooper Middle School community as a whole demonstrated their compassion and concern for the student and his family during and after the medical emergency, and subsequently were honored for the heroic lifesaving actions by the leadership team of the Fairfax County Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Heather Dorman, Dan Farney, Mike Hunter, Donna McAllister Long, Deanne Park, Leslie Saltis, Frank Stevens, and Scott Worthington for their quick thinking and heroic actions in saving the life of a Cooper Middle School student, and for affirming by their efforts that Fairfax County Public Schools was so fortunate to have such dedicated employees. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Velkoff. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Would whoever is here?
Yes, well, first of all, we have plaques and recognitions for each individual lifesaving person, and so we will call you one at a time, come down in front, and the family and other staff members in the school board, we will have a picture. We are so pleased to honor you people today.
We're also joined by Arlene Randall, the principal of the school, the wonderful principal at Cooper Middle School, certainly the team, and then Ms. Fox, one of the parents of Christopher Fox, and Christopher is also here with his younger brother and sister. So we're very, very happy that he's doing so well now, a ninth grader in high school. So thank you all for acknowledging. And actually, the mother requested that we do this at a board meeting, so I told her I thought it was very appropriate to do this in the holiday season, so I know they're here, too.
Thank you again, Cooper staff. It is, you are just heroes for all of us. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. All right, item 3.01. Oh, before I start for that, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jeanette Huff, incoming school board member, has joined us as well. All right. Item 3.01, citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. Tonight, nine, ten citizens, I'm sorry, have signed up to address the Board, and one constituent has submitted a video testimony, which we'll watch at the end. So the first speaker is Lydia Emanuel, to be followed by Jessica Swanson.
Hello. My name is Lydia Emanuel, and I'm a senior at Jeb Stuart High School. I am speaking here this evening to encourage the modification of the facility's renaming policy. Along with the name Jeb Stuart comes a history of inequality, racism, and oppression. Sad but true, this history cannot be undone nor forgotten. Such an identity misrepresents the students and faculty that make up my high school family. My high school is a diverse institution with an international student body. Two-thirds of the students are second-language speakers from over seventy countries. I myself am of Eritrean origin, and many of us don't identify with the ideals that Jeb Stuart and the Confederacy stood for. We believe that the name of the school should reflect those who are dedicated, dedicated to, and uphold the highest ideals of freedom, justice, and civil rights for all. With changing the school name comes a profound avenue for education and reflection. This, this change is imperative to revising the original message that was sent to the people of color and to revive, but certainly not erase, our history. This course, this course of education and means of obtaining justice is only a part of the journey of the movement to bring racial justice, to bring racial justice, but would be a remarkable one for our school. School names are more than just words on a building. They are identifiers of the students and employees within them. In this case, the name of my school inaccurately represents who we are as individuals and as a community. School names are meant to be honorable, representing ideals to which students can aspire to be. Just as naming a school for a Confederate soldier would be inappropriate today because you don't want to send the message that Confederate ideals are respectable, it is wrong not to change the name of the school now. Like many, like many of the thousands of students of color at my high school, I love my school and am excited to receive an incredible education. However, my values are challenged when I am forced to celebrate the Confederacy to express my love for my school. We hope to change the name of our school to better reflect the positive learning environment and accepting atmosphere we enter every morning. This is why I need you, I need you to vote in favor of the proposed change to the facility's renaming policy to end the message of oppression and resulting desensitization to racism that the symbols currently representing my school carry. The modification of this policy will make it possible for Fairfax County to discontinue its tolerance of institutionalized racism. Please, please make, help make this happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Lydia. Very good job. Jessica Swanson, to be followed by Jocelyn Shu. Jessica Swanson? Okay. Jocelyn Shu, to be followed by Harris Latif.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Jocelyn Shu. I'm the parent of students at Kilmer Middle School and Marshall High School. My children have been in Fairfax County Public School System since 2005. I'm here this evening to say thank you. As a founding member of Real Food for Kids, I speak on behalf of our organization to extend our gratitude for all the work that this school board has done, has undertaken for the last few years, to enhance and improve the quality of school food for all children. We have received strong support from the school board, and especially recognize Ryan McElveen and Pat Hines, who have continually worked beside us for the past four years to provide guidance and thoughtfully consider our concerns. Sandy Evans met with us early on to provide advice for starting our advocacy, supported us throughout the years, and recently connected us to Sleepy Hollow Elementary School, where we held our Food Day event this year. Patty Reed has been very involved in our activities at Marshall High School and took time to show her support when we met with Kaiser. We also extend our thanks to the other school board members who have shown their support by meeting with us and attending various events. We acknowledge Ben Press, who spent time with us to provide great ideas from a student's perspective. And finally, thank you to Dr. Garza for supporting our efforts and participating in our events almost immediately upon your arrival to Fairfax County. We are grateful for the support of the recommendation for an assessment of the school food program. The assessment provided a framework from which to begin new changes to the FNS program. In addition, we and the students, thank you for the statesman's station and the other salad bars that have been put in so far. Studies show that students who can self-select their produce will try more new things and eat more of what they select. Those, along with other initiatives, such as removing regular soda from student access and the removal of over ninety percent of artificial additives in the food, indicate a strong commitment that you and Fairfax County has made to be a role model and champion of healthful choices for our students. We are extremely excited to welcome Rodney Taylor as our new FNS director and look forward to supporting him as he works to implement his vision. We are counting on you and your new colleagues to trust his vision, support his endeavors, and help him succeed for the sake of the health and well-being of the FCPS students. Real Food for Kids is thrilled to be an official FCPS partner, working on meaningful educational programs with the children and staff of FCPS. We look forward to our Culinary Challenge and Wellness Expo on Saturday, March 12, 2016, at Robinson Secondary School, and we hope to see you at this and other Real Food for Kids-sponsored events. Thank you again for making children's health a priority during this past term. The members of Real Food for Kids are looking forward to a continued partnership with you in the new year. Thank you and good night.[1409.42][1409.42](Applause).
Harris Latif, to be followed by Stephen Spitz.
Mr. Student Representative, Dr. Garza, Chairman Hines, members of the school board, the boys are back in town.[1425.35][1425.35](Laughter). Waiting all day to say that. Firstly, let me say it's wonderful to be back stateside after nearly four months abroad. I actually just landed in Newark last night, unannounced as a surprise for my family, and wrote these remarks, both crammed in an airline seat somewhere over the North Atlantic. So it's very, very nice to be here tonight. My first semester at the University of St. Andrews was all that I hoped it would be and more, and after the first few weeks, I had no problem deciphering the Scottish accent, and they had no problem deciphering mine. A highlight of my time in Scotland was a visit from our very own Mrs. Debbie Kilpatrick, president of the FCCPTA, along with Mr. Kilpatrick, who had me over and even attended one of the tours I was giving for the admissions department. But I'm here tonight to congratulate and thank the twelve members of the Fairfax County School Board class of 2015. This is a graduation. Whether you're spending another four years on the Board or moving on to other endeavors, each of you have contributed countless hours of service to the students, teachers, and truly the community of Fairfax County, making it a better place to learn, work, live, and raise your children. Over the course of the last four years, you've implemented All Day Mondays for our over seventy-eight thousand elementary school students all across the county. You made the groundbreaking decision to implement later high school start times, which has helped tens of thousands of students live healthier and happier lives. My brother, who turns thirteen today, actually, who's, he's over at Cooper Middle School, does have some constructive criticism about the middle school start times, but I'm sure it won't take us another thirty years to address that. Right? 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 Okay, good. I think that is a yes. Defying bigotry and hate. You voted last November and then again this past May to ensure that FCPS remains a tolerant, safe, and inclusive place to learn and teach for all members of our community. You turned a school system that is sadly well-known as one of the last districts to desegregate in the late 1960s into an example for others on what it means to be a school district in the 21st century. And in what I think is the greatest decision this school board made, you selected a fantastic superintendent in Dr. Garza. She has done amazing work for this county's students, teachers, and parents alike, and really is the only person I would want leading this district as we face these challenging budgetary times. To Mr. Velkoff, Mr. Stork, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Reed, thank you for your service to the students and the community. Your combined nearly thirty-five years of board service is a tribute to your commitment to your community. And for Mr. Stork and Ms. Smith, who will be moving on to take seats on the Board of Supervisors, please don't forget us come budget season, but I don't think we'll have to worry about that. As for me, I'm heading back to Scotland late next month, and I'll be across the pond until the summer, but I hope to see you all again when I come back. With that, I say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and as they say in Scotland, Happy Hogmanay. Thank you.[1589.57][1589.57](Applause).
Thank you very much, Harris. Stephen Spitz, to be followed by Tina Hohn.
Good evening, Superintendent Garza, Chair Hines, and members of the school board. My name is Stephen Spitz. I reside in the Lake Barcroft Community in the Jeb Stuart High School Zone in Mason District. I strongly support Mason District's own representative, Sandy Evans', motion to change the naming policy. I earned a BA at the University of Michigan with high honors in history. I'm a retired civil rights and constitutional law attorney who litigated a number of school finance and school desegregation cases. I've also taught in public schools from kindergarten through high school and at two law schools. So I deeply care about education. I believe it is long overdue for the school board to change the name of Jeb Stuart High School to honor a longtime distinguished resident of Lake Barcroft, United States Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall. Justice Marshall was not only the leading advocate arguing for the abolition of racial segregation in Brown versus Board of Education, but was also a legendary defender of equal protection of the laws for everyone. He's the perfect symbol of the diversity of the student body at the high school and would be a wonderful inspiration to students, faculty, administration, staff, and the larger community. Students should be proud of the name of their school and not ashamed of it. Make no mistake, Jeb Stuart High School was not named to honor a Confederate general. It was named instead as part of Virginia's massive resistance to school integration. And in my written statement, I have a lengthy quote from a new book which describes what actually happened at the time, and I request that you read that. This year, we are celebrating many major milestones. Two of them are the 150th anniversary of the Thirteenth Amendment that abolished slavery. Another one, which is the subject of this book, centering on Fairfax County, by the way, is the impact of the 1965 Immigration and Nationality Act, which ended the national origins quota system. These pieces of legislation took wisdom and courage on the part of those responsible for enacting them. I hope the Fairfax County School Board has the wisdom and courage to change the name of Jeb Stuart High School to Justice Thurgood Marshall High School to help Fairfax County move into the 21st century instead of continuing to honor its troubled past. Thank you.[1777.54][1777.54](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Ms. Tina Hohn, to be followed by Mike O'Brien.
So before I start, Jessica got caught in traffic. Can she go? Okay.[1795.76][1795.76](Laughter).
Thank you. We must assent from the indifferent.
"We must dissent from the indifference. We must dissent from the apathy. We must dissent from the fear, the hatred, and the mistrust. We must dissent because America can do better, because America has no choice but to do better." He continued. "We will only attain freedom if we learn to appreciate what is different and muster the courage to discover what is fundamentally the same. America's diversity offers so much richness and opportunity. Take a chance, won't you?" Thurgood Marshall spoke these words in 1992 in accepting the Liberty Medal. "Good evening, Chairman Hines, members of the school board. My name is Jessica Swanson. I reside in the Mason District in Stewart Pyramid, and Stewart is located in my neighborhood. Tonight, I'm not here to extol why Stewart is an inappropriate name for our diverse high school, which of course it is, but to stand with the students and the NAACP to encourage you why Thurgood Marshall embodies the values and skills to which we aspire and why we should extend him honor by renaming the school after him. As you know, he was a longtime foe of segregation, and as a lawyer, he headed the NAACP Legal Fund, Legal Defense Fund. He was the chief architect of a legal strategy to end segregation, and he argued Brown versus Board of Education and won. In fact, he won nearly all the cases he argued in front of the Supreme Court. And he was ultimately named the first African-American Solicitor General and first African-American Supreme Court Justice by President Johnson. His life and his career model all the skills we've identified in the portrait of a graduate as important for our students. He was an effective communicator, collaborator, ethical and global citizen, creative and critical thinker, and goal-directed and resilient individual. And we had the distinct privilege of this great American hero living in our own community. So, school board members, it's our patriotic duty to name the school after an American who dedicated his life to bringing us together, not one who represents fighting to tear us apart. Thank you."[707.81][707.81](applause)
Thank you. Ms. Tina Home.
Friends, I cannot believe how quickly four years have passed. You have been a great board. You moved forward with things that had stagnated for decades. You restored Full Day Mondays. You implemented later school start times. You reformed our school discipline policies, and you hired a great superintendent. You should be very proud of yourselves. I am very proud of you. To those of you who will be back, fair warning, Cots might have to be back too. To Kathy Smith and Dan Stork, congratulations on your election to the county board. You know you are not off the hook. There are high expectations that you, who have sat on that dais, will fight even harder for schools on your new dais. To Ted and Patty, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge what a loss it will be to not have your reasoned and measured voices on this board. And to Patty in particular, I return to you words that you gave me when I left the board. I think I shall miss you most of all. I wish there had been a way for both you and Dahlia to serve on this board. Your job is not done. There is another issue that has stagnated for half a century, and you've got to fix it. And I'm pleased you're taking a change-of-the-policy approach. Cots included renaming both Stewart and Woodson High School as a priority in our last document to you. In the greater scheme of things, of budget cuts and achievement gaps, we know it seemed like an unimportant issue, but small indignities matter. Symbolism matters. The name of Stewart High School was selected after Brown v. Board of Education. The anti-integrationists chose the name, and they knew the symbolism. It is well past time to get the symbolism right. Naming the school after the late, great Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall, who lived in the neighborhoods that feed into Stewart and through whose leadership on Brown v. Board of Education, the face of public education changed in this nation, is the right symbolism. I predict some will say that the demographics of Stewart High School mean that if the name is changed, perhaps we should change it to a prominent Latino. I think it's important to remember that the civil rights victories that Thurgood Marshall achieved is the foundation on which every civil right for every minority stands in this country today. The primary fighters in the civil rights movement might have been African-American, but the victories were for all Americans, whether we realized it or not. Any community that has struggled or continues to struggle for equal treatment under the law owes a debt to Thurgood Marshall. Whether a student is white, black, Latino, Asian, native-born, immigrant, poor, English-language learner, a student with disabilities, Muslim, Jewish, Buddhist, or Christian, Thurgood Marshall helps secure equal treatment for you under the law. The students of Stewart High School deserve to go to a school with a name that befits them, their diversity, the diversity of this great county, and this great nation. It is long past time. Thank you.[913.75][913.75](applause)
Thank you. Mike O'Brien, to be followed by George Becerra.
Good evening, everyone. As you said, my name is Mike O'Brien. I'm a 25-year resident of Fairfax County, an author and a blogger on civil rights and social justice issues, and currently serve on the Executive Committee of the NAACP here in Fairfax County. My wife, Allison McGill, is a retired FCPS school teacher. And most importantly for this discussion, we are the proud parents of three children, all of whom attended K-12 Fairfax County Public Schools. I rise this evening to speak in favor of changing the school naming policy. More specifically, I wish to address the issue of the name of one school in particular, Jeb Stewart High, and the inappropriateness of that name in this day and age. In my judgment, there are only a few legitimate reasons why a school might be named after an individual. Number one, to honor a person whose life and whose values represent a benefit to the community. Or number two, the individual's achievements are so noteworthy and beneficial to the common good that they serve as an inspiration to the youth attending the school. Now, given these criteria, it's difficult for me to see how and why a school in Fairfax County in the year 2015, 150 years after a war was fought to settle these issues, how and why a school can be named after a Confederate general who fought in open rebellion against the United States of America to enforce a system of human slavery based on race. I just don't see how that's possible today and what possible example we are trying to send to our children by having that name. I mentioned my three children earlier. One important fact that you should know about them is that all three are African-American. Now thankfully, none of them were forced to attend a school named after an individual who would have sought their enslavement and who would have treated them as property rather than as the precious human beings that they are. But as you heard earlier, there are a significant number of students of color who now attend Jeb Stewart High, and I cannot fathom what messages they absorb daily as they walk past that name and whatever symbols of the Confederacy that name brings to their young minds. But here are some messages that occur to me. Number one, you are less than equal than your white counterparts here. Number two, this county still has a grudge against the outcome of the war that enabled you to be here in this public facility in the first place.[1073.41][1073.41](laughter) I can say it again.[1078.29][1078.29](laughter) But let me go on. I don't believe that it's the intention of this school board to send those messages, nor do I believe that it's your desire to perpetuate this battle over who is more or less equal or worthy in our pluralistic and democratic society. We are all equal here, and we are all worthy. And that is why I urge you tonight to vote to change the school naming policy so that we can ultimately remove the name of Jeb Stewart from that high school and change the name. If I have one final word, I'd like to publicly recognize the five students who have courageously and respectfully brought this issue to our attention. Three of them are here tonight. They are the voices and faces of our future democracy, and I applaud them for their persistent efforts. Thank you.[1133.25][1133.25](applause)
George Becerra, to be followed by Kimberly Adams, and then Debbie Kilpatrick.
Good evening, Superintendent Garza and Board of, um, School Board members. I'm here to talk about tonight about your student success report that you're going to receive tonight. So just a quick 10 minutes that I looked at it, I'm going to highlight on pages 16 and 18 on the report, terms of your progress in closing the achievement gap. So if I look at the numbers on the reading pass rate between black and Hispanic, uh, black and white students, it'll take seven years to close the gap. Between Hispanic and whites, eight years. Math pass rate, black and white, seven years. Hispanic and whites, seven, 12 years. Now, if you look at the scaled scores, reading, it'd take eight years for black and white, Hispanic, white, 16 years. The math scaled score difference of 12 and nine years, black and Hispanic, white. We've got work to do. I know Chief Academic Officer Duran's starting. He's starting to learn how to the system, how to spell FCPS, which is a big system. So I know there's some tall orders to be had there. The reason I bring up this is I know I've mentioned several, for several months now, closing the achievement gap in terms of time limits. Supervisor Cook brought it up at the joint meeting, and I think this will be a start. If you're showing these numbers and it progresses at the same level, you can say seven, eight years such, just put it down so they can get a number and we can work towards closing it. Another thing, you mentioned the report is project momentum. Project momentum's only been around for less than a year, so I don't know if that's the scale to what we're striving. Before it was Priority School Initiative, before it was Project Excel. If we mention those other things, I think I can believe more project momentum is the direction. Other aspects, with a minute and a half left, where I really wanted to talk to tonight is to thank some of these school board members who I've had the privilege to talk hundreds and hundreds of times, literally, no joke. Ms. Reed, your advocacy on closing the achievement gap, in terms of equity issues, in terms of closing the achievement gap, in terms of facilities. I don't see much difference in your new board member coming in, so I think people will realize that, how and financial prudence that you strive for for years, saying it over and over again, and community involvement. Mr. Velkoff, when I first met you, your candidate, I said, wow, he has a long way to go. Wow, he's, he's, this is a lot. But at the end of the day, you're the most improved school board members in the last four years by far. Where I had, Board of Supervisors members told me they appreciated you as the Budget Chair, and you thought, you collaborated with your thinking. So I know that the tremendous growth you've had, it was remarkable. To Supervisors Kathy Smith and Supervisors Dan Stork, Ms. Smith, I know you're a quiet lady, not much on words, but what I did learn from you is strong with conviction, even when it's against the grain. When you get those 11, 1 votes, 10 to 2, 10 to 2 votes, like Ms. Schultz and Ms. McGlocklin, it takes a hard person to stand there and be the only dissenting vote. Also, strong advocate for SIMSAC. And finally, Mr. Stork, three years working with you, you know, I've learned so much. All I can put down in words is man of action and reasoning. And for both supervisors, you'll see a lot more of me at the next level at the Taj Mahal. Thank you very much.[1345.83][1345.83](applause)
Kimberly Adams, to be followed by Debbie Kilpatrick.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Garza, my name is Kimberly Adams. I'm the President of the Fairfax Education Association, and we want to express our heartfelt gratitude to those who have chosen to serve on the FCPS School Board, both past and present. When you ran for this office, you dedicated your lives to public service. When you were elected, you committed yourselves to a full understanding of the minutia of FCPS in order to constantly work to improve our school system. To those who are completing their service, we thank you for the thousands of hours that you dedicated to our students, our staff, and our community. For those of you who are moving on to other offices, we congratulate you and look forward to working with you to fund FCPS needs. To our new school board members, we thank you for stepping up to the plate, taking an active role and responsibility for the direction of FCPS. FEA looks forward to working with you to further our goals. We have high hopes and great expectations that we will have a great working relationship. We look, you will look for a call from us in the next few weeks to set up our first meetings. Finally, we look forward toward the opportunity to support you all in your endeavors. If you present, when you present, a needs-based budget to the Board of Supervisors and ask for full funding, we will be there to support you. When you point out the compensation in Fairfax has fallen behind our neighbors and work toward appropriate resolution and staff workload, we will support you there as well. We may not always agree on every detail, but know that we all agree on the goal of putting kids first and keeping Fairfax County Public Schools a world-class system. Thank you for your service, and have the happiest of holidays.[1458.83][1458.83](applause)
Thank you. Debbie Kilpatrick.
Good evening, everyone. And I appreciate having the time to be here tonight to recognize and thank all of the school board members for your past service in support of our students and our families in Fairfax County. Tonight, on behalf of our Fairfax County Council PTAs, I would like to extend some special recognition to the following school board members for their advocacy on behalf of our families, our students, and our staff. So at this time, I would like to, and I have certificates for each one. I have the advocacy award that is being presented to Kathy Smith, Sully District, for her service and longtime supporter of PTAs since March of 2002. Dan Stork, Mount Vernon District, for your longtime service as well, and working with your PTSAs in Mount Vernon has meant a great deal, and your service since January 2004. Patty Reed from Providence District, with your service and support since November 2009. And Ted Velkoff, who I've known for quite a while as well, and for your service since January 2012, and your continued support of our PTAs. We would like to, I'm going to pass these out to you, of course, but we really appreciate your time, your dedication, and your service. And it really means a lot to our families to know that you are out there advocating for them. And we would also like to wish you well as you continue your advocacy, which I know you will. We would also wish the incoming school board members all the best. We look forward to working with them as well and continuing that grassroots advocacy that is so important in Fairfax County and really does make things happen. So we look forward to working with you in this new term. So I'm going to pass these out. And thank you to Ben, as well as bringing that voice of a student to the table, as well as Harris Latif, who it was quite nice to entertain him for tea in Scotland and St. Andrews. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much.[1624.37][1624.37](applause) We have, while Ms. Kilpatrick is doing that, we do have video testimony, so in just a minute, we'll be putting that up front. The video testimony is from Elizabeth Enday, representing sleep.
As a parent, I'm thrilled with the later start time. Thank you for that. It means that my daughter can still go to bed at the same time she did last year, and she can sleep a little bit longer in the mornings now.
School board, now I'm getting a lot more sleep.
Is that my turn?
Yay! Okay, I like the later start times because I sleep more.
Oh, I can study in the morning if I have a test that day.
Awesome.
Okay, at this point, actually, we are going to the board now. We'll honor our outgoing school board members, and we will do that one at a time, and we'll begin with 3.02, Resolution Honoring Ted Velkoff. I call on Ms. Darrenat Kofax for the resolution.
Thank you, Chairman Hines. A resolution honoring Ted Velkoff. Whereas Ted Velkoff was elected as an at-large representative to the Fairfax County School Board and served with distinction as a member of the board for four years since January 2012, and whereas he ably served as vice chairman of the board in 2014 to 2015, and whereas he served as both the chairman and the vice chairman of the board's budget committee and collaborated with the superintendent and chief financial officer to effectively articulate the school system's budget priorities to the Board of Supervisors and to the community. And whereas Mr. Velkoff worked tirelessly to advocate for Fairfax County Public School students and families at the state and local levels by serving as the board's delegate to the Virginia School Board Association and as the board's liaison to the Fairfax County School Board, the Fairfax County Planning Commission, the Partnership for Youth, the Committee, the Community Criminal Justice Board, the Adult Community Education Committee, the Career and Technical Education Committee, and the Family and Early Childhood Education Program. And whereas Mr. Velkoff recognized the importance of early intervention programs as the foundation for success, championed the interests and needs of all children, supported the fine arts as an integral component of the portrait of a graduate, and advocated for choral and instrumental music opportunities for all students. And whereas Mr. Velkoff established consistent and open communication with his constituents and understood the power of words, which he chose with care to convey respect, build consensus, and reflect the integrity of his beliefs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Ted Velkoff for his outstanding service and dedication to the Fairfax County School Board and to our students and community members.
Is there a second?
I so move.
I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We will vote on this and then take pictures. Okay, so all those in favor? Come on, Mr. Velkoff, let me say it's unanimous. It's unanimous, okay? And so we will present the resolution in front and take pictures, okay? So.
You need help, Karen?
While we're coming back to our seats, I would recognize Mr. Tom Wilson has joined us tonight, too. Mr. Wilson, give us a wave, the incoming school board member from Sully District. And also, school board members, you will all have a chance, after we do the next two resolutions, we will all have a chance to say nice things about our members who are leaving us. So, next resolution is honoring Dan Stork. I call on Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my honor to read the resolution tonight, recognizing Patty Reed for her service on the board. But first, I want to make a few personal remarks. Little did Patty and I know, 20 years ago, when we met as moms at Sleepy Hollow Elementary School, and we're taking our girls to ballet, carpooling, and doing, I know, me too, and doing volunteer PTA work, that one day we would be serving on the school board together. Life's funny that way, isn't it? I'm not sure anything was further from our mind at that time when our girls were so little together. But here we are, having gone through years of advocacy together, years of fighting the issues we feel passionately about, and years of working to make a difference in the lives of children. And in that time, Patty has indeed made her mark, and so many things that she set out to do, she has accomplished. After Patty moved back from Colorado, she and I quickly reconnected, and she started working with me and Phyllis Payne advocating for later high school start times, became the pyramid coordinator for Oakdale High School for sleep. I think that was probably about a decade ago, wasn't it? When our girls were still in school and still little. And we finally, of course, as we all know, this year, finally, finally accomplished that health goal. As usually, as usual, Patty brought both her analytical skills and her passion and determination to that issue, including by chairing the ad hoc committee on the Blueprint for Change that resulted in our bringing the consultant in. On the last board, Patty was an early champion of student discipline reform, moved forward by this board, as well as championing more transparency and accountability in communications and in fiscal management. She was a relentless advocate for an independent auditor general, and we have now created that position, and as you know, we've just hired our first one. Patty could always be counted on to ask the critical questions, to take a broad view of every issue, and be thoughtful and analytical in her approach. She's one of those rare people who asks, how can this be done, as opposed to, why can't this be done? She would routinely ask how teachers would be affected and have the teachers' organizations been consulted. This earned her the very first Fairfax County Federation of Teachers President's Award, along with our former colleague Tina Hohn and I, in a memorable ceremony where we were dubbed Charlie's Angels. I think Patty was Jaclyn Smith, but that may have been lost to history. We'll have to ask about that later. She's brought a rye sense of humor to this serious work as well, as a spirit of fair play and compassion. This was Patty's full-time job for more than six years. I want to thank her husband Craig and her daughter. Is Craig here tonight? Oh, Craig, you're there, oh, great. As well as your daughter Allison and Andrew. You know, I know, at times it must have seemed like we saw you more than they did, and I know that families do give up a lot because of this. Patty, I know you will have many more adventures, but I will certainly miss you terribly dear, dear friend. And with that, I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas Patty Reed was elected as the Providence District Representative to the Fairfax County School Board and served with distinction as a member of the board for six years since November 2009, and whereas she skillfully served as both chairman and vice chairman of the board's budget committee and as chair of the Comprehensive Planning Development Committee, and whereas she served as a member of the Infrastructure Financing Committee and the Joint Budget Development Committee, and used her financial acumen and collaborative approach to bring clarity and transparency to the shared work of the Board of Supervisors and the school board. Whereas Mrs. Reed was an effective advocate for Fairfax County Public Schools at the federal and local levels, serving as the board's federal legislative liaison and liaison to the Fairfax County Planning Commission, the Adult and Community Education Committee, the Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee, and the School Health Advisory Committee, and as a member of the board's governance and public engagement committees. And whereas, she worked tirelessly for district-wide transformational changes, including revisions to the student disciplinary procedures, implementation of later high school start times, supportive healthy food choices, and the establishment of an independent auditor general position for Fairfax County Public Schools. And whereas, Mrs. Reed brought to the board a notable record of successful management background, which she augmented through her graduation from the Leadership Fairfax Program, and used that experience to analyze education issues with deliberate research, priority focus, and willingness to ask the difficult questions to ensure that the school system achieved the results expected by the community and deserved by the students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Patty Reed for her outstanding service and dedication to the Fairfax County School Board and to our students and community members. I so move.
Second. Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Let's meet for pictures. While we're coming back to our seats, I would recognize Mr. Tom Wilson has joined us tonight, too. Mr. Wilson, give us a wave, the incoming school board member from Sully District. And also, school board members, you will all have a chance, after we do the next two resolutions, we will all have a chance to say nice things about our members who are leaving us. So, next resolution is honoring Dan Stork. I call on Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my great honor to present a resolution honoring Daniel G. Stork. But before I read the actual resolution, I have a few personal remarks myself. So hold your breath, Dan. The first time I saw Mr. Stork, which was a little more than 12 years ago, on a campaign trail, as he and I both were running for the school board at the time, I thought that I was seeing a ghost, a presidential ghost from 150 years ago. And I was absolutely right. After the election, Mr. Stork, as the Mount Vernon District School Board member, began truly showing his presidential political skills to accomplish what he wanted. I do not believe that President Lincoln himself could have done any better. Among many other things, building up two new schools, South County High School and South County Middle School, was epitome of a display of his dogged persistence, sheer willpower, and persuasive logic, earning accolades from all sides. He has always been quite serious in doing his work as a school board member. At one point, as a board chairman, he insisted on keeping a school board meeting going through a snowstorm. Even the board members, yes, including Brex Center, if you are watching, especially Brex Center, were telling him that family members were saying things were really, really bad out there. At another time, in the middle of a raging tornado watch, when everything was shut down, he insisted on continuing on with a public engagement committee meeting at the gatehouse. Power went out, but staff had to stay because the committee meeting was not adjourned. His future colleagues, supervisors, if you are watching, on the county board of supervisors, and the county staff should better watch out. They just do not know what they are getting from Mr. Stork. He and I enjoyed, we were regular attendees every year at all county's sixth-grade choir festival. One of the most fond memories that I have with Mr. Stork was to sing together National Anthem at a school board meeting. Four men, there were four of us, including former school board members, Stu Gibson and Steve Hunt, we tried a quartet. As you know, there were supposed to be four parts in a quartet, but I could only hear three parts, and wondered about which part Mr. Stork was singing. Which part were you singing? And I would not also forget his competitive spirit in playing basketball game against LT members back in 2006, the only time school board and LT played against each other. He and Brex Center were committing all the fouls for the both teams. So torr for me that I always had neck pain to look you up, Dan. I am going to miss you. And let me read the resolution. Whereas Daniel G. Stork was elected to Mount Vernon representative to the Fairfax County School Board and has served with distinction as a member of the board for 12 years since January 2004, and whereas he ably chaired the board from 2007 through 2009, and whereas Mr. Stork devotedly served and often chaired the new
I was seeing a ghost, a presidential ghost from 150 years ago. And I was absolutely right. After the election, Mr. Stork, as the Mount Vernon District School Board Member, began truly showing his presidential political skills to accomplish what he wanted. I do not believe that President Lincoln himself could have done any better. Among many other things, building up two new schools, South County High School and South County Middle School, was epitome of a display of his dogged persistence, sheer willpower, and persuasive logic, earning accolades from all sides. He has always been quite serious in doing his work as a School Board Member. At one point, as a board chairman, he insisted on keeping a School Board meeting going through a snowstorm. Even the board members, yes, including Press Center if you are watching, especially Press Center, were telling him that family members were saying things were really, really bad out there. At another time, in the middle of a raging tornado watch, when everything was shut down, he insisted on continuing on with a Public Engagement Committee meeting at the gatehouse. Power went out, but staff had to stay because the committee meeting was not adjourned. His future colleagues, supervisors if you are watching, on the county Board of Supervisors, and the county staff should better watch out. They just do not know what they are getting from Mr. Stork. He and I enjoyed, we were regular attendees every year at all county's sixth grade quarter festival. One of the most fond memories that I have with Mr. Stork was to sing together National Anthem at a School Board meeting. Four men, there were four of us, including former School Board Members Stu Gibson and Steve Hunt, we tried a quartet. As you know, there were supposed to be four parts in a quartet, but I could only hear three parts, and wondered about which part Mr. Stork was singing. Which part were you singing? And I would not also forget his competitive spirit in playing basketball game against LT members back in 2006, the only time School Board and LT played against each other. He and Press Center were committing all the fouls for the both teams. So torr for me that I always had neck pain to look you up, Dan. I am going to miss you. And let me read the resolution. Whereas Daniel G. Stork was elected to Mount Vernon Representative to the Fairfax County School Board, and has served with a distinction as a member of the Board for 12 years since January 2004. And whereas, he ably chaired the Board from 2007 through 2009. And whereas, Mr. Stork devotedly served on and often chaired numerous Board Committees, including Human Resources, Governance, Audit, Smart Savings, and Linkage, and as Board Liaison to the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee. And whereas, he passionately championed the interest of all students, especially the neediest, helping to realize full day kindergarten for all schools, advocating for more resources for priority in high-need schools, and working to increase student industry certifications. And whereas, Mr. Stork strongly believed in maintaining the fiscal integrity of the Fairfax County Public School System, as evidenced by his insightful and discerning service as a member of the Joint Smart Savings and Joint Budget Development Committees. And whereas, he was an ardent champion for improved student physical and mental well-being, advocating for later high school start times, student discipline reform, and increased mental health services. Now therefore, be resolved that Fairfax County School Board extends not only its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Daniel G. Stork for his outstanding service and dedication to Fairfax County School Board, and to our students and community members, but also congratulations and best wishes on his new position as a member of the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. And so I move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Evans. All those in favor?
Come on, Dan. Raise your hand.
All right. Here we go. Thank you, Mr. Stork. Next is a resolution honoring Kathy Smith. I call on Ms. Darinette Kofax.
Thank you, Chairman Hines. It is my pleasure to read a resolution honoring Kathy Smith. Whereas Kathy Smith was first elected in March 2002 and served with a distinction as the Sully District Representative to the Fairfax County School Board for nearly 14 years. And whereas Ms. Smith served three terms as the Chairman of the School Board in 2004, 2009, and 2010, and two terms as the Vice Chairman in 2007 and 2008. And whereas she advocated for and advanced the School Board's progress toward completing the strategic governance and student achievement goals as a member of the Governance Committee from 2007 to 2015, and as Committee Chairman in 2007, 2008, 2011, and 2013. And whereas, she has been a passionate advocate for students, parents, and teachers in her work on the Board and as a member of the numerous committees, including Instruction, Comprehensive Planning and Development, and the Ad Hoc Committee for Streamline and Focus. And whereas, Ms. Smith served on a number of joint committees, such as Smart Savings, Budget Development, and Infrastructure Financing, and worked to increase collaboration between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board at a time of rapid population expansion in the county. And whereas, she worked with determination and tireless commitment with PTA, PTO organizations, parents, principals, teachers, and administrators, staff, and School Board colleagues to ensure and maximize the strength and success of Fairfax County Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends not only its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Kathy Smith for her outstanding service and dedication to the Fairfax County School Board and to our students and community members, but also congratulates and best wishes for her new position as a member of the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moon, second. All those in favor? All right. So, what we'll do now, we will give the remaining School Board Members, those who are sticking around, an opportunity to further embarrass our outgoing colleagues, and then we will give you all, you four, the last word. So, anyone who would like to start us off? Ms. Darinette Kofax?
Thank you, Chairman Hines. I too had some personal remarks about Mr. Valkop that I will share at this time. Several of us on the Board met at Community Education Committee five years ago. We all had served in local districts for many years, in PTAs, on county boards, and in advocacy roles. As our individual decisions to run for the Board happened and the campaigning began, it was exciting to befriend others who shared your ideals and hopes for positive changes in our school system. Ted was one such person. And when he got elected to the Board, he took seriously his responsibilities as an at-large member to this Board. He often visited my district and others to see what the real differences were, what were the strengths, what were the challenges. He sat in classrooms, he met with teachers, he talked to students, and he began to better understand the complexity of our counties. I so appreciated his willingness to often travel down there to my district and learn that Chantilly was actually a part of Fairfax, not Loudoun County. Ted spoke a budget language that I could understand, and there were many shared coffees discussing budgets. There were interventions and advocacy during Lee District Town Halls. Ted and I embraced the strategic governance model but yearned for the strategic plan. And I thank you, Ted, for your vision, providing the roadmap that you did. Last year, we held our leadership roles, and I want to thank you for your partnership, your support, and for allowing me to vent often. Ted is patient and kind and funny, and he has a highbrow sense of humor that I don't always get. But Ted is often philosophical, and recently he shared with me, when I was trying to wrap my head around some comments that held little validity to me. He stated that due to life circumstances, Tammy, people sometimes see different truths. Ted's gracious character and open-mindedness allows him to see things this way. He strives to mend fences between the truths, to build consensus, to lead. I will strive to keep this lesson in mind, Ted. I'm thankful to call you my colleague, my friend. I wish you life's best as you continue to make positive contributions to our community. Wherever your new adventures await you, we all will miss you. Thank you so much for your service.[1391.24][1391.24][applause]
Now, if Board Members would like to also take a minute to recognize anyone else, or we can move along. I mean, it's up to you all, what you want to do.
I...
I think that we can do this any way we want to, but I think to save time, if you want to, you can go ahead and speak to all four Members at once, or we can come back to you. I'm going to leave that up to individual Members.
Okay. Brian said he wants to speak to Ted, so I'll allow him to do that. Then we can, if you can come back to me at another time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. McAvoy, you want to speak to Mr. Valkop? Because you seconded. Go ahead.
I didn't second it, but I do want to speak to Ted right now. So, Ted, I consider a dear friend and a two-time running mate. I've gotten to know Ted quite well over the past four years. He is a man of many talents and also a very busy man, as we all know. Not only is he a computer programmer, but he also studied to be a musical conductor. Many of you probably don't know that Ted composed music for my wedding. Originally, the music was arranged for a quartet, because I was too cheap to pay for a quartet.[1489.32][1489.32][laughter] He had to compose it anew for a trio. But not only did he compose it, he and Illyon both sang his composition in my wedding. I'm going to miss Ted because he was part of our at-large trio. And I'm sorry, we won't be able to sing with you again, Mr. Moon and I. We wish you all the best and look forward to hearing you critiquing us from the podium in the coming years. Thank you.[1530.13][1530.13][applause]
Thank you. Okay. Why don't we do this, then? We'll go down and anyone who would like to speak, go ahead. Ms. Strauss? Yes. Why don't we just do that?
I don't want to be skipped. So, when I would go out and do PTA meetings, and I would show people the website and how to find stuff, and I would give examples of School Board Members, and I always would show Ted on the website and say that I've known Ted since kindergarten, because we had daughters that were the same ages. So, I've known Ted a long time, and he is the kindest, most caring, thoughtful person I know. And he sees the best in everyone. And to see his advocacy grow over the years and his real caring for the school system and the students here and the staff here, he's been a great colleague, a great neighbor, a great friend, and just his commitment and his ability to see the best in everybody has made him an excellent Board Member. And I know this Board will miss your wisdom, but you need to stay involved. All the best to you, Ted.
Ms. Strauss?
Ted, a trained musician, and my favorite question always, and you still have to answer tonight, what's playing in your head? I'm always fascinated by that, and I so admire people who can hum in their head the entire symphony. I so wish I could do that. Ted has served the whole county well, but also is a longtime Chantilly guy, and always enjoying all of our students, all of our parents, always being available to the community. You helped us so many times with the budget, as Budget Chair. On the other side of your brain, on the math side, in crunching numbers and helping us all understand what the decisions we were going to have to make, particularly when we were dealing with the VRS, you did such a good job in all those jars and trying to figure out A, B, C, D, or F. It was very, very complicated. So, I appreciated that. So many times when you would give a speech, they were so well thought out, so beautifully researched, and I always thought, I wish I could talk like that. I wish I could find all those words. I will miss you, Ted, and do get another life. Don't watch us on the TV. You don't need to do that anymore. But at any rate, keep that music going in your head, and I may call you now and then and have you hum it all the way through. I am envious. I will miss you, and thank you so much for all your dedication.
Mr. Stork?
Ted, thank you very much for your service on the Board. Thank you for representing the Buckeye State in true form and at a quality way. And I think we all, my first real exposure to you was at a Hall &amp; Meadows debate. We're all there. And you were asked probably the toughest question that we were all kind of wondering where Ted was going to be, which is on later high school start times. And I think that answer to me characterized your willingness to be open, look at things differently, and not commit yourself to something that you may later, you know, see differently. And those were the responses you gave, is that I'm open to that even though, you know, I have some doubts about it. And I think that characterized your service on the Board, and I think in turn the quality of your consideration of any measure, any item, any motion that somebody brought forward. And ultimately, obviously pleased to see that you saw that as an opportunity to help kids and make a difference while still balancing the concerns you had about later high school start times. So, again, I use that as kind of an example of kind of what I think every Board Member needs to do, which is come in, we may have a particular perspective, but to be open for how that might change and the nuances that really ultimately we have to decide upon. So, thank you very much.
Evans?
Ted, what a difference four years.
Ted, what a difference four years makes. Who would have thought four years ago that you and I would be presenting as a team at VSBAs, as we did just a month ago? When we started on this Board four years ago, you and I had what you might call a history already, but we came to understand and respect each other and found ourselves working together. And I largely credit you with that. You were determined to be collaborative in your approach and to reach out to find common ground. This is a tribute to your thoughtfulness and your respectful nature, as well as perhaps shows that you have a strong streak of optimism. So I quickly came to appreciate your desire to take a long-range perspective on all of the issues that came before us. And I do remember quite vividly, very early in that four-year term, you were going to vote against a motion of mine. You actively sought me out to talk with me about it, to tell me that, and to tell me that you still wanted to work with me in other ways on this same issue. And I was just so impressed with that, with your candor, and ever since then, you know, I knew I could rely on you to be very straightforward and honest with me. So I think that set us on the right path, and I know that that candor has been one of your hallmarks. I know you've shown your constituents that you have a true ability to listen as well, and you showed it again this last year with some very difficult situations, where you went out and listened to some very angry people and helped them be a little bit less angry. So we have gone from our Jane Curtin, Dan Ackroyd personas to valued colleagues, and it is a relationship I can say that I truly treasure. So thank you for that. It was one, this has been one of life's more pleasant surprises. You will be truly missed, and I wish you all the best in civilian life.
I'll go ahead and go, since we're going in order. One of the things I could always count on you to do for us, Ted, is to encourage us to be bold, and I think that's because you have the courage of your own convictions and your own principles. I think as somewhat been said, I have at times felt like you were the conscience of this Board, doing the things that maybe were not that practical, pragmatic, but you felt were very important in terms of principle. And as you know, there was more than one time when I realized that you were right and that I was wrong, and that it was important to take time and do the right thing. And so, I know that I will miss your voice here, but I think we've already set up a coffee for next week. I'm going to have my Tuesdays with Ted going forward, right? I'm looking forward to it. Mr. Moon?
Just briefly Ted, as Ryan mentioned earlier, we are the three amigos on the team as an at-large, three at-large members. That four years ago, when you ran together for at-large, you know, you, I mean, I have a little more experience than you did at the time. You quickly learned how large this county was. You remember that one evening, we had to travel from, you know, London for two minutes, actually more like a one-minute speech, and then all the way down to Mount Volum for 30 seconds, and then we had to go back to Great Forest, all in the same evening. Wow, what a huge county it was. And we had really enjoyed our companionship over the last, you know, three, four years. And I didn't know that you could actually make Ryan cry. Maybe, I don't know when the next time will be, but you did a good job in making him cry. But, you know, Ted, something you said a couple of meetings ago, that is still ringing in my ear, it is about speaking your mind and voting your conscience. How we, at least I, as an elected official, as an elected school board member, under tremendous pressure from different sides, find that difficult to do, but you have always been able to speak your mind and vote your conscience. I admire you. Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Wow, everyone's so serious. Well, Ted, I'll just be very brief and say, I have so enjoyed working with you on the budget. You and I are kind of a yin and yang team, I think. One of us would talk a big picture idea, and the other one would jump in and say, well, this is how you would implement it. And so, I really felt that we made a very good team together, and I feel like we made great strides over these past few years in terms of our budget process as a Board and as a school system. So I thank you for that. And I also wanted to say, I really loved how you love to wax philosophy. You know, in most meetings Ted will come out, I don't know if people know this, but he'll have some well-researched quote, and it'll be very applicable to whatever happened that night. And I really, I really like that about you, that you're very thoughtful. And maybe it's the musician part of you that comes out, the creative part, you know. And the only other thing I'll say is that I wish for you to have a little more balance in your life, and I know that you'll continue to work hard, and you'll probably wish that maybe one of these days you'll be in the audience and be able to come up here and just, you know, wave your finger at these folks, right? But anyway, thank you very much for your service. I know it's been especially difficult for you, given that you have a full-time job, but you never let that get in the way. I was always so amazed. I don't know when you eat and sleep, but you've been a terrific Board member and colleague and friend, so thank you very much.
Ms. McGlocklin?
So I have three special memories that I wanted to share with Mr. Valkop and my colleagues. The first one is that when we joined the Board four years ago, the San Francisco 49ers and the Baltimore Ravens had a nice rivalry growing and actually found themselves in the Super Bowl. And so Ted was great about warning me that his coach, who's the older brother of 49er coach, is probably going to enjoy victory, and that is what happened. But it certainly made watching that game particularly more enjoyable, knowing that I had a colleague who was going to give me something if my team didn't deliver. My second favorite memory is that when this Board first came about, we were certainly facing yet again some very serious budget struggles. And Ted really said it best, and it's resonated me every single year. When we look at our work and trying to go into budget negotiations with the Board supervisors, we have a choice. We can play poker, or we can play bridge. And it just, as Ms. Reed pointed out, that sort of philosophical approach about how we're going to do our jobs, that was very much appreciated. It's one of the things I've enjoyed continuing to channel, as we really do the best work we can on behalf of the county. And finally, and most importantly, there will be no doubt in my mind going forward in my continued work, that you've been instrumental Ted in reminding me that even though I am Megan O'Brien McGlocklin and quite proud of my Irish side, you really helped point out that the social worker side of me can be equally and sometimes more effective in the work that I do here in trying to help move a Board of 12 to find what will hopefully be the best work we can do on behalf of kids. So I will continue to have you echo in my ear and try to find that social worker each and every time. So thank you Ted, and I hope you will join the Tina Hohn Club of amazing school board alumni that help us continue to do the great work we can on behalf of the school system.
Mrs. Schultz?
Actually, I hope that you don't join the Tina Hohn Club and that you get your Thursdays and your once-a-month Mondays back. And I really do hope that your honey-do list from your wife is nowhere near as long as my husband's is for me, because then you're not going to get any of your time back. You're going to have to call in and prep somebody on March Madness, because I don't know that we have anybody left on a legacy to take care of our March Madness, and I hope you get a chance to use poker chips for poker.
Mr. Press?
If you don't mind, I'll come back at the end and just kind of do it all at once, if that's okay.
Wonderful, thank you, yeah.
I was going to say the same thing. I have collective comments, so at the end, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Whatever people want to do. So if, I think that next on our list was Ms. Reed, so would someone like to start us off? Ms. Strauss?
I'll start it off. Patty, you have the kindest heart. You always were so polite, but you had, what I would say, the caring heart for our children, especially for our teachers. You always, always reminded us whatever we were doing, how it'd impact our teachers, and I always appreciated that, because as we all know, the quality of instruction is dependent exactly on the quality of the teachers, and you reminded us that at every turn, and I thank you for that. You and I had to resolve a very difficult boundary issue some years ago. I had such great respect for the way you represented your community, make sure that their voices were heard, and of course, those decisions are always tough, but you were so good to your community. And you helped me to think about the needs of your constituents, as I was trying to think about the needs of mine. But I think that that's part of the job, is that we bring the viewpoint of others to the table, to make sure that whatever decisions we have to make, that we truly understand all the pieces of it. The other thing that I will miss is you always gave us the 30,000-foot view. But it was good, because if we didn't have you there at the table, we wouldn't have that. You would remind us that we work at the policy level, and we really need to think of the big picture. So every now and then, if we get stuck in the weeds, kindly give us an email or a tweet and say, lift it up a little bit. That's where you need to go. We'll all come to Florida and visit. You're the one Board member that is clearly going on to a better, relaxing, wonderful family world. So I envy you that. Enjoy your family, enjoy your husband, and the tan that you will have now eternally, living most of your time in Florida. Thank you so much Patty, really appreciate it.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I was going to say, if somebody has to be our advisor on March Madness, somebody's going to have to take pilot lessons, because I don't think we're going to get to 30,000 feet as often without you. I feel like I'm going to have to channel you and say, I don't really know what this has to do, what are we doing here? What are we doing here? Let's get back to up here. And you're going to have to be a bug in our ear to help us get back to the big picture often. And truly, as a colleague, well, your husband definitely deserves you back. I don't know, maybe I'm going to redirect with Ms. Hohn is maybe too. I will miss you most of all, but it's well-deserved for the labors that you've put forth for Fairfax.
Mr. Valkop?
To be brief, I would echo back to you, Mrs. Reed, the things that you said to me. What I particularly have always noticed about you is your willingness to think outside the box and throw spaghetti on the wall and see what sticks. So I think you and I, as observers over the next couple of years, can figure out, we'll have to watch and see who's going to be the spaghetti-thrower around here.
Ms. McGlocklin?
So as I noted earlier with Mr. Valkop, that he told me to channel the social worker in me, and meanwhile, what I have said over the last four years is if I could really channel anything, I wish I could channel Patty Reed. I hold you in such incredible high regard, your ability not only to ask the incisive questions, but your ability to articulate it so well and in such a concise manner. It truly, I found, was tremendously influential to me and many of our colleagues, and you helped model how we could be far more efficient and really effective leaders on this Board. And so, I am a long way away from being able to achieve Patty Reed status, but I am so grateful for the four years that we have had together and the influence you've had on me. And I hope you know that in these next four years that I will be serving on the Board, I will be thinking of you every time, on how best can I say this, in the quick Patty Reed fashion, and still have it be meaningful and effective. And the six years you have served on this Board, your passion and your commitment to really helping our school system continuously improve, to be the very best it can be, that is an amazing legacy, and I hope you will look back fondly on these six years. And as has been reminded to us earlier this evening, the 12 of us achieved so much in our four years together, and we will share that until the very end, and you were such a big part of it. I'm going to miss you.
Mr. McIlvein?
So before we came out here tonight, we all viewed what, you know, you might term a PG-13 slideshow of the past four years. But there's one photo in there, and the Board members probably didn't know what it was, because it was kind of blurry. It was back in, you know, iPhone 2 days or whatever. But it's a picture of us in a taxi. It is Jack Dale in the front seat, six feet tall, this is a small, imagine a very, very small, you know, gas-saving car. Jack Dale in the front seat, and it's you, me, Kathy Smith, and Val Dale in the backseat. And I just think that's very representative of who Patty is, and I'll explain. And we all took this taxi together because we wanted to save the school system money. And I guess the theme of tonight is that I'm cheap, but we, so we're in this taxi, and Patty volunteers to take the middle seat, so she's, you know, not really able to sit on the seat. But I think that's also her approach to life and her Board. Not only her politics, where she's very middle of the road and willing to approach everyone, but, you know, she's always been very collaborative with all of us. And I think we can all define Patty in lots of single phrases. You've heard a lot of them tonight. Strategic plan, audit, 30,000 feet, parking lot. But of course, you know, it's not just one of those single things that makes Patty special to us, it's all of them combined. So, we will miss you Patty.
Ms. Erinette Kofax?
Patty, a lot of this has already been said about you, but I want you to know that I've had a pleasure, a pleasure, it's been so pleasurable working with you and getting to know you. The words that I've used to describe you are ones that your colleagues have already said about you. You have an amazing collaborative nature, you have great out-of-the-box thinking, you have vision, you have a strong worth ethic, and I appreciate our collaborative work on the strategic plan. I did appreciate the times we had our phone conversations and our lunches, our talks about budget, strategic planning, our children, and hot flashes. Patty, I am really sorry to see you leave our Board, but I know you will be successful in whatever path life leads you down in your next adventure, and please stay in touch, please use your positive collaborative energy for more community outreach. I know you will, I know you'll find another road to put your energy, but thank you so much for being part of our team, and I will miss you.
Ms. Smith?
I was so happy Ryan didn't say thought leader. Whenever I hear that phrase, Patty, I always think of you. You wanted to make sure that we had leadership and as a Board we were moving forward to do good things for kids. And you came on the Board midterm, and I know how hard that is, and you did a great job, you know, just climbing onboard and figuring it all out. And you got involved with the community in your Board work. I really, when I was Vice Chair to you being Budget Chair, it was collaborative. I really felt like we worked together as a team, and I appreciate that leadership with you. But thank you very much for your service.
Mr. Moon?
You know, Patty, I'm not going to talk about this evening, the other taxi ride, you, me, and Elizabeth together at national conference. I will leave that maybe post-meeting conversation about, you know, one of the things that I truly appreciate of having learned from you is, you know, your reminder to the other 11 of us, and also a staff, including Superintendent, that... 11 of us, and also a staff, including superintendent, that whenever there is a recommendation presented to the board, alternative options should also be listed, and there should be also a presentation of analysis of other options, et cetera. I mean, that's, I mean, we don't always do that, but this is something we should always strive for, and thank you.
Well, I will say, I will also miss you very much on the board. Your business background is different from mine, and I think that's what we all bring, is something a little bit different. And there's that business term disruption, I think, that I keep hearing, and it sounds, you know, not great, but actually, it's kind of what you do. We'll be going along, talking about something, and other people have touched on it, and then you will force us to take a fresh look at whatever it is we've just spent an hour talking about, you know, and make sure that we're thinking about it from all angles. And I think, you know, that's really important, and I think we're going to miss it. But mostly, you're always kind and generous, and your sense of humor gets through those tough times when it is kind of, it's hard to collaborate, but at the end of the day, I feel like you always have that really important perspective that, you know, the kids come first, the employees come first, and we can keep our sense of humor about this. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve with you. Mr. Stork?
Thank you. It's definitely my pleasure to at least to speak about somebody who I thoroughly enjoyed working with on the board, and remember my first few conversations with you, and your questions were, in my mind, right on the mark, which is, how do I enter, how do I connect, how do I build, how do I be an effective school board member, and kind of what are the things that seem to work better? And not that I had any particular knowledge, but just your questions were the right questions, I think, for any new school board member, which is, what, you know, how do I connect in a broad way that I can be truly an effective leader for my community and make a difference? And I think in your case, you particularly were willing to challenge the status quo, which I was always pretty comfortable doing as well, and I think that's part of what I think made you a very effective leader for Providence, and one that I think the district, you know, thoroughly benefited from. The other part of it, which, and I know we're all, I'm smiling myself, at least I'm thinking about, you know, the need for charts and graphs and tables, and having some way to kind of simplify the core elements of what it is we're doing, or at least to make it an easier way. The analytical mind that you brought, the business mind that you brought to a lot of our conversation expedited, I think, our considerations of so many things, and helped to kind of distill maybe what are the key elements of it, and I think helped us reach a better outcome. So I am deeply honored to have served with you, and deeply appreciative of having the opportunity to serve with you, and look forward to working with you in other ways over the next few years. Thank you, Patty.
Yeah, I think we're up to Mr. Stork now. We're getting there. Who would like to say some, okay, I'll start with Ms. Evans?
Dan, I'm so sorry that you're leaving our board. I know you're going to the other board, the OB, the other board, the other board, yeah. You are gonna leave a very big hole here to fill, and it's, I know when I first met you, it's been more than a decade ago, and I met you when I was an advocate, and you were so encouraging, and I learned from you then just how passionately you felt, particularly about student health. You know, the issue I brought to you was a student health issue, and I learned that you were just a tireless champion for student health. And you helped keep me going when, you know, there were times it's easy to flag when you're advocating, and when I finally joined you on the board, you were not only an ally, you were a mentor as well, and I appreciate that piece, too. It was particularly important when I had something urgent to ask at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and I knew that, well, who's gonna be up and answering his email now? Well, it's gonna be Dan Stork, and we've actually had many, many conversations at odd hours of the night, and I appreciated you being there to be a sounding board. You've, one of your hallmarks, of course, has been to be an unflagging champion for our neediest students, in particular, all students, but in particular, the neediest students, and that's something that we have to continue to remember. And I think that you will be a voice in my head after you have left, that we always have to remember how anything we do affects our very neediest students. You also have, I mean, I think your time on the board, your impact has been immeasurable, you know, from helping create the student achievement goals, to always looking for more ways to, for transparency and communication, and videotaping the works, the work sessions in this, these meetings that we have, and putting them online. So I think that over the course of your time on this board, you've just, you've made a huge impact, and I know we will work together, we will continue to work together, but I will miss you very much. So thank you for everything that you've done, for me and for all the kids of Fairfax County.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. President Lincoln. I love theater and I love plays, and I have to tell you, in the community, people say, "Well, isn't that guy Abe who sits next to you?" Like, oh, his name is Dan Stork. Oh, yeah, President Lincoln. So I think that's great, fun. Dan, the first time I met you, it was at a board meeting, and you were sitting on a citizen budget committee task force. And I remember you came up to me, and I said, "Dan, I think you ought to run for the board." And it was at a time when obviously we needed more representation from Mount Vernon, and I am so pleased that you took it on, and that you ran, and that you succeeded. You've represented your community extremely well in so many issues on the board. Sandy mentioned health, sleep, nutrition, stress, mental health, as well as student achievement. One of the most long-lasting things that will, that is tangibly meaningful to kids is CTE. Not only, I mean, is the program important, but you are the one that suggested and pushed through, are paying for their certifications. And before we had done that, we had kind of a handful of kids who had taken the certification and had gone on. We are in thousands. That certification is often the road to the future for those children. So you have truly touched the lives of thousands of children and given them a future that if it hadn't been for you, Dan, perhaps we wouldn't have given it to him. So that's very lasting. I am very, very, very proud of that. And then you and I have shared parenting issues together, and you've given me strength. So, and I'm so glad you're going on to the Board of Supervisors. We will call you weekly. It has been since Kate Hanley was on the board that we have had a school board member on the Board of Supervisors. So I look forward to that. And I know that you serve your Mount Vernon community well. I think it must have been door-knocked on every single door. Pretty close, pretty close. You understand your community well, you represent them very well, you are so patient, and I've never known you to want to cut off debate. You will always go on and let everybody have as many words as they want, but that shows your patience and your wisdom. You're always eager to hear another idea and make sure that everybody's ideas are out on the table. So you will be excellent on the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Dan.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Dan has been a very trusted advisor in my four years on the board. I was most fortunate when the seating arrangements had him sitting right next to me, and every once in a while, when the Irish side veered up, Dan would just gently touch my arm and give me the reminder to, again, take a very mindful moment and realize that my passion for the work we do, again, is best at when the emotions are lower and the cognition is higher. So, Dan, I think about how you've been not just a great mentor, but certainly what one would call a wingman. So I think about going into this next four-year term, and I guess I have to warn all of my colleagues that I'm gonna be looking for a new wingman, so I'll be scoping that over over the holidays and figure out who's gonna be the lucky winner of that new post. But in all seriousness, Dan, you just really have served this board with such distinction, and you've been a great role model, and I could not be more excited for our county that you will take all of this work and your knowledge on the school board and bring it to the next level with the Board of Supervisors. We will be a better county for it, and I know that our school system will remain in good hands for both you and Ms. Smith, who are joining that board. And so while I'm excited and delighted for you, I will have such a heavy heart, because you've just been so wonderful to serve with, and I wish I just had more years with you.
Mrs. Schultz?
So we've already alluded to the fact that Mr. Stork is a night owl. You were like my Mary and Barry, you know? It's like, "Ah, the night owl. No, 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 just in being a night owl, now come on." So it was nice, because there was always a time when, you know, things were quiet and nobody else was bothering us, where we could, you know, talk through and work through issues or be available. Now, when you were available at 6:00 in the morning, not so much. But I do have to say that never have I met somebody who, with whom I agreed so little, but who I liked so much. And I think that is a manifestation of who you are, is that you see the forest for the trees and you do not assume. And that has allowed a deep friendship to form, and gee, I really wanted you to not win the seat. I really didn't want you to win, but I certainly am glad for you that you did, because we have and count one more friend on the Board of Supervisors.
Ms. Smith?
I'm not feeling any pressure, are you, Dan? I remember the first time I met you was when Isis Castro brought you to the board meeting and said, "I have somebody to run for my seat." And she warned us, "He looks a little bit like Abe Lincoln," which reminds me of the time that we were at the National School Boards Conference in San Francisco, and you and I were going to grab dinner, and I had never seen Dan outside of here where people know him, and it was fascinating to see people come up to him and approach him, because he looked like Abe Lincoln. I'm excited about us working together. We will pull together our strengths, we both have different strengths, and we will be able to stop, you know, have conversations about what's important and what's true, and I look forward to us continuing that work together.
Mr. Velkoff?
Thank you. Dan, I didn't have a chance to introduce you to my daughter who came here. She just arrived from Oxford, Ohio yesterday. She's the one who's starting her PhD at Miami University, your alma mater. You know, I was thinking about your Lincoln resemblance. People have sometimes said, and I agree with them, that my wife resembles Sally Field, and one of my fantasies when the film came out was to have you and Patricia show up at the ticket counter and buy a ticket together and see how they reacted. I'm really looking forward to you being on the Board of Supervisors. I think you and Kathy, these comments apply to Kathy as well, but you really have an important role to play, and the fact that there has not been a board member there, I think, is perhaps one factor. You know so well, the two of you know so well, how transparent we are, what good processes we have, and that in fact, we can be trusted, and we have a great leader. And I think you're in a position where you can help communicate that and break down those walls that have formed simply out of negligence, I think. So I'm really, I'm really hoping for great things from you and from Kathy, and, you know, I think you have their ear. I think they listen to you honestly, so I'm counting on great things from you.
Mr. Arnakofax?
I think when a lot of us talk, you talk about the first time we met somebody, and I remember meeting you and telling you I was thinking of running for the school board, and I think it was probably South County Middle School at that point that we were, you were at a meeting. And I don't know if you remember this, but I do, because you were quick to tell me, "Oh, I'm not gonna endorse anybody just now." And once I told you I wasn't seeking an endorsement, just some information, you were very quick to help me and lend a helping hand, and that's who you are. That day, he goes, "Get in your car and follow me." And he like took me to every school in Mount Vernon, we drove around, and I followed him, and he got out, and he told me about every school. We toured Holland Meadows, and I'm like, "This isn't even gonna be one of my schools." But, but he was so precise in what he wanted to show me, and he was so excited to share his information and passion, and that's what I always remember about you. You were always so helpful in acclimating me to the needs of our combined and shared district, because we truly are partners down there in Lee. I appreciate your long talks, I appreciate your passion for serving the citizens of the community. I do envy your stamina, and Dan sometimes did get a little impatient if you didn't answer his 3:00 AM email by 7:00 AM, but, but, you know, I get that, and it's all part of the passion that made him, that makes you serve, and that will serve you well as you move on. I am extremely happy to have you representing the Mount Vernon District, and so excited for you, and just wish you all well, and since you didn't endorse me that first time, maybe someday you'll owe me a robo-call.
Well, by the time it gets to me, everything's pretty much been said, but I would say that from the very, from when I was running, also, I've thought of you as an advisor, you know, and a sage advisor for school board work, and all kinds of quotes that I think we all have from you, praise in public, admonish in private. And, you know, you, I think, have also added a lot in your time here when it comes to transparency and public engagement, engagement with the citizens. I think those were important principles of yours, and if I recall, the last time the two boards, the school board and the Board of Supervisors, met together, someone on that board said something along the lines of, "Dan, you have a lot to learn." And you very quickly, fortunately, said, "Well, I think you have a lot to learn from us." And I think that's true, and I know that you will bring those principles of transparency and really engaging the community to that board, and, you know, I think every public board can use that, so looking forward to that, and really enjoyed serving with you. Ryan McElwain wants to say something.
So Dan, you, like me, El Young, and Ted, and Pat at times, have had full-time jobs on top of your school board responsibilities, and I know that's a demand which makes you push things into the late, late hours, as we've discussed tonight. But you always made time for your school board responsibilities, and tonight was a good example. You know, Dan had his office holiday party over which he has to preside every year, and he still made it here in time for our meeting, and, you know, we always appreciate that. And I think what I will remember best is Dan's posture and his willingness to get up in the middle of school board meetings or retreats and stand and stretch, and I think that's something we can all learn from. And I think if he had stayed on the board a little longer, we might have gotten to the point where we would actually have standing meetings. And maybe you guys can do that on the Board of Supervisors now. But I will miss, when we have retreats, I will think of you, when we're all just lazily sitting around. But you've also been, you're a very quiet person, but you always do speak with impeccability. And as you so often mention, and as we've discussed in private, you know, that's what makes your words all the more powerful. So I do hope you continue that, both for Kathy Smith's sake and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. And I will also miss having you correct us on our terminology, whether it's the Richmond Highway Corridor or down there, but we will, we will always look to you for new terms on the Board of Supervisors if we ever need any advice. So thank you, Dan.
Okay, I think it's Ms. Smith's turn now to be embarrassed. We'll start with, well, I'm sorry, did I forget? Oh, Ms. Reed, I'm sorry, I'm not keeping track.
It's all right. It's still Thursday, isn't it? I wanted to say, Dan, that one of the things that I've always admired about you is that you are very principled, and for example, when someone wants to put forth a motion or an amendment, you need a second in order to allow that person to speak. And even if it was an idea that perhaps others didn't embrace, you always felt it was important to allow that person the opportunity was important to allow that person the opportunity to present their idea. And I really respected that. And you also were the person that would say, you know, "I have to be honest with you," and then fill in the blank, "I haven't read it," or "I don't understand where you're coming from." I really just appreciate that, that you always wanted to make sure you understood people's points of view. And then the other thing, the other P-word in addition to principled is patient. And others have talked about that. And when, earlier you were talking about counseling me when I first came on the board. Really, one of the things that resonated the most was be patient. You know, I came in and management consultant, "Let's fix this. Let's change that." And you said, "Hold on, sit down." You know, you have to get seven votes in order to have any idea pass. You have to get to know the board members. And that was the best advice to develop the working relationships first before you approach some of these ideas. And it only took us six years to get the school board auditor general, right? Only six years. So you do have to have the long view, and I appreciate that so much. I'm also astounded that, like Mr. Velkoff, you have a full-time job. And, I mean, you're running an office, and you rarely sleep. You don't even eat that much. I don't know how you survive. And it's amazing. But I do know that we also share a love of the West and going out to the great outdoors. And I hope within your new position, now that you'll have staff, I'm so jealous, but maybe then it'll free up a little bit of your time so that you'll have a balanced life. And maybe you can get out and enjoy the outdoors, either out west or as running, which I know you enjoy doing. And I will always think of you when I hear the song "Borderline."
Did I miss anyone? All right. Ms. Smith, who would like to be first? Ms. Evans?
So, Mrs. Smith, what will we do when you take all that institutional knowledge with you down the road to the other board? You know, you're somebody that we could always count on to know the background, the history, what's really in the governance manual. And I think it's fair to say that you were the mother, at least one of the mothers, of strategic governance, that you were an ardent advocate for that at a time when I was pretty skeptical about it. And I came around to seeing the value of it over the course of time. You have made this your full-time job, and I think more than a full-time job, which has benefited your students and parents, community in Sully District. So I, and you always told us that, you know, keep our mission clear, you know, keep our eye, the laser-like focus on student achievement. And that's something that we should all remember and something that we can continue to remember even after you're gone from this board. And beyond that, I just wanted to say, I will miss you, and we will always have Lubbock.
Ms. Darnakovacs?
Kathy, I didn't meet you before joining this board, but I did watch you on TV. You were a woman who came prepared. You were always ready to help fellow board members under the complexity of these issues. You knew the facts. You knew the history. You were vice chair twice and chair three times. That in itself is, requires an amazing amount of energy. You were one of the grandoms of this board. And I never told you this before, but all that scared me a little bit before I met you. But TV is not real life, and the Kathy Smith that I have grown to know is not that reality TV board member I thought she was. She is always prepared. You always know the history of issues. And I could always call upon you to help me understand the intricacies of these complex issues. You're a teacher with PTA roots. You're not afraid to make decisions that are best for the division, even though they may not be the most popular ones. You're always out in the community sharing the news. You're a mom. You're a grandma, a great colleague to everyone, and someone I'm so happy to call my friend. I thank you for helping me grow into my role on this board. I could always count on you for advice, to bounce ideas off, to lament when we were frustrated, and to celebrate when we had our successes. And so here we are today, I'm both lamenting and celebrating. Our board will truly feel your loss, but as we, you know, are sad about that loss, we're celebrating your success. I am so proud of what you've done, and I am so excited for you. You are an amazing woman. You are going to make an amazing superintendent. I can't tell you how excited I am for you. I know you will do well by us. We all know that. Thank you for your service, your support, your friendship. Please stay in touch, and we all wish you the very, very best.
Mr. Velkoff?
Thank you. Kathy, I think it's fitting that Elizabeth was here, and you actually referenced her earlier because, of course, Elizabeth and Stephanie were kindergartner friends together, and that's when I first met you. And you were PTA president at Poplar Tree then. And I think you know this, but getting to know you was a life-changing event for me. It made a better person out of me through all the various things that knowing you set in motion, starting with just being, just going to PTA meetings. And you taught me, you know, the importance of your community and being involved in all those things. Your election in 2002 was honestly one of the greatest thrills of my life. It was just such a wonderful thing to know a personal friend who, you know, nobody that worked for you then had any clue what it took to elect somebody to office. And it was just, it was a great thrill that inspired me and hundreds of other people in our community, as you know, and that there was evidence again of that. I was sort of your pale shadow in the Sully District, following at the PTAs in the three schools. But of course, you know, it was because of you that I figured out what the school board was doing and why the work here is important. And really, I gave you the courage to even seek to be here. So I just, and there are just so many other things that have happened in my life because of the chain of events that started by meeting you. I can't thank you enough. So I've already said my piece about the supervisors, but it's just wonderful being here with you. And I thank you for everything.
Ms. Strauss?
Kathy, you were always my call before we did anything. What do you think, Kathy? I had such, we didn't always agree, but I had such respect because you thought so carefully. The first time I met you, you and Lynn Terhar wanted to come meet me at a Starbucks to see what I thought about you running for the school board. I believe you were a PTA president at the time. And I said, "Sure, go for it." And so you came in midterm, and we had already started the budget process. And I remember how frustrated you were. I'm so sorry. Was I chairman at the time? I don't remember. I think I was. I don't know. It's too long ago. But your constituent service to your community in Sully is amazing. You knew your PTAs. You knew your PTA presidents. You knew all of your principals. You knew exactly what was going on in every single school. And consequently, you were so good at informing all of us as to what was going to be best. We had difficult boundary decisions. We had tough budgets. We hired a couple of superintendents. And you were always principled and thoughtful and very strong. And you were recruited by one of the legendary, strong women in the county to do this job. And I remember when Kate came to me and said, "Do you think Kathy could do it?" And I said, "Yes." So as you and Dan are the first school board members since Kate Handley was on the board, the fact that she had such respect for you says a great deal for the expectation. And I know you're already feeling that expectation. Sorry about that, but it's there. But I think I'll still call you to find out, get your advice and get your take on things. And I certainly will share my take on things. But thank you. And I want to particularly thank your family, not only for the fact that they have shared you with this board for so long, but I know when going under the Board of Supervisors, I'm sure Steve was looking for a quiet retirement to spend more time with his wife. And that isn't going to happen. So I'm sorry for that. But they're very kind. But those of you who love dogs, she loves dogs. She's babysitting for four dogs right now. So that shows you what kind of a caring woman she is, but a very strong leader. Thank you, Kathy.
Ms. McGlocklin?
So as some have heard me say over the years, it was actually a little over 23 years ago, I decided to marry a Republican. And I reference that because one of the things that I've appreciated in my work with Kathy is just like I learned to appreciate my husband's diverse perspective in our marriage and becoming better people at seeing an issue in a broader lens, I very much appreciate that in our time on the board, while we didn't always necessarily see things from the same angle, I know that your perspective was important for me as an individual board member to have my lens broadened. And it was also quite fun, and we did find ourselves on the same page. And I know without question, your legacy on this board, the dedication, the love that you've brought to the school system, shown brightly. And we are a better school system because of your love and dedication for it. And I want you to know that we will do our best to honor the great work that you've done, the dedication and the time and the effort, including the strategic governance. And I just, I want you to know that for this one board member, I'm grateful for all that you've done. And I'm extremely excited for you to take your years of service here and help educate our supervisors and our community even more about the needs and the accomplishments of Fairfax County Public Schools. So thank you, and God blessings to you and your next term.
Ms. Schultz?
So my favorite moments, like if you have snapshots of the last four years on the board, were these odd alignments of the stars where Kathy and I would be lone holdouts on votes. And what that shows is that there is an opportunity to bring together disparate views on almost anything at any time, if you'll work on it. And it wasn't often enough. I hope you don't have as few of those on the board when you go over. And I hope that you have your unique timing cycle during breaks, that you don't have as much competition, because otherwise I just may have to come and join you, you know, because I wouldn't want you to get lonely. And you know what I'm talking about. And I know that you appreciate it, so.
Mr. Stork?
I truly have enjoyed serving with Kathy, and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve with you. And I, and I, we have been in some ways the yin and yang of the school board multiple times, and to the point that chair, vice chair, multiple times. And that wasn't, that wasn't, that was coolly by deliberateness on, I would say probably our parts, but just as much a part of the rest of the board for making sure that we could balance the perspectives. And we did. I mean, I think that was the value and the importance, I think, of having relationships that are different but still respectful. And I know we have always had a deeply respectful one. And I've had great conversations and disagreements, but ones that personally I can't imagine not having known you and not having worked with you and not having shared so many great experiences. And the VSBA parts of that, I think were always, I think mutually for us, were the high points of our time, because we could actually sit back and just kind of relax and have the kind. And so I know that first evening down, I was always getting down there late. You were always there. And then we would just sit around and share kind of life stories in our lives. So, and again, looking forward to doing more. But Kathy, your service has been critical to this board and where we are today, and I deeply thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You can tell that Kathy was a teacher. Just the way that she explains her points of view, the way years ago when she was chair and she was running meetings, just, I was so impressed by that, how you could herd all these cats and really keep things on track. I also have to say that I really appreciated your guidance when I first came on the board during a special election, as you did. And you kind of took me under your wing, and you would call me and you'd say, "Now, I remember. This is what I was going through as I just first started, and here's some tips." And really, that first year in particular, you were so helpful. And really, it was such a unique experience that someone else had shared that I could learn so much from you, and I appreciate that. And I also am so glad that we had the opportunity to work closely together on one of the joint committees with the supervisors as well as on the budget committee. It was really an opportunity, again, for us to use our skills and to be partners in ways that sometimes on issues, maybe we're on other sides of issues. So I really liked the opportunity to have a goal that we were both working on together. And I know finally that you'll be an excellent supervisor, and I know you'll just bring the same perspective, but in a way that's kind of thoughtful, right? And balanced. You don't get excited, right? And you don't care if you're the only one that feels a certain way. You're going to be making those points. And we know that you'll be a good advocate for the schools and also now for the whole county. So I wish you the best of luck.
Mr. Moon?
You know, when I first met Kathy, you'll remember that, the very first day, I saw you crying. And I said, "Whoa, this lady has a soft heart." But when Kathy does school board work, she's so disciplined. She brings that disciplined approach to the work of the board that whenever we, board, or board members get off track, she brings all of us back to focus on the issues and the real work of the board. And she always tells us, reminds us, that board can be most effective when it works as a collective body, not twelve individual board members. But I have, as you depart this board, this goes to both, you know, Kathy and Dan, you know, we all seem to be respecting very much the last school board member to serve on the Board of Supervisors, Kate Andy, who was my political mentor still. She's my mentor. Just you all remember that when she was on the Board of Supervisors, especially when she was the chairman of the Board of Supervisors, board always shared your surplus with the school board. Just remember that and apply that, and remind your colleagues, future colleagues. Thank you.
Mr. McElmey?
Kathy just said, "Uh-oh." So Kathy didn't let me read her resolution tonight because she thought I'd embarrass her, I know. So I, so I will try not to do that. But Kathy first became board chair when I graduated from high school. So that doesn't make her old, just a veteran. But I will tell you that there are occasions when she has used her age to an advantage. So first, when we were trying to get to Lubbock for Karen's site visit in 2013, we learned that our plane was canceled. And we learned that we all couldn't get on the same plane to go to Lubbock. And as a result, she used her seniority to tell me that I was the one that should take the three transfer plane trip. That Elizabeth and I... the three transfer plane trip that Elizabeth and I were sent on. And little did we know that there was going to be a snowstorm in Denver that would force us to be rerouted to Albuquerque, which led to a five-hour, 100-plus mile-per-hour car ride through the Southwest, past Billy the Kid's grave, and all sorts of historic landmarks just for Karen. But I thank you for that, Kathy, because that is one experience I would never have had without you. I think, as so many others have said tonight, Kathy was a great advisor to me. She kind of took me under her wing when I was first on the school board. And she really guided me through the process of being a new board member. And I do think she has become probably my closest friend on the board. And in fact, I have had the pleasure of being her seat partner for the past, for three of the past four years. And it's been the ride of my life, probably even more so than that Lubbock ride. Kathy is someone, as you can tell, that I can always count on to make me laugh. You never know what she will be keeping under the dais. It could be frozen bottles of water. It could be a bag of ruffled potato chips. Or it could be a fork, which she uses to poke me when she gets frustrated. So without Kathy on the board, who is going to be here to keep me in line? And without Kathy on the board, who is going to be our cheese? And let me tell you that I have, I tried to find a cheese award trophy to give her. And the damn thing would have taken four weeks to get here. So I did, she is not getting her cheese trophy tonight. But I will be giving you something else. And I do hope you continue to be the cheese on the Board of Supervisors, stand alone and give 'em hell. Bye, Kathy.
Thank you, Ryan. You know, the one year that you guys did not sit next to each other, I sat between you. So you can imagine how that was. That was not fun, no. But Kathy, what will we lose when you're no longer on the board? We will lose institutional memory that you have. And I hope that you'll continue to, you know, read the agenda items and things and call me when something's wrong, because I count on that. I, you know, we will also lose a role model of outreach to the community and to PTAs. I've counted on you as a model for that. We have some schools in common, which has been fun. I also, you know, we'll lose a model of respectful dialogue, you know? When Ryan talks about being the cheese standing alone, that's not easy. It's not easy to be the only one or one of just a couple who are voting the way nobody else is voting. And you always manage to do that in a very respectful and kind way. And that's not always, you know, that's not always easy. We're very passionate about what we do, and that's important. And just that, you know, that steely strength, I agree. I think that they need that on behalf of the school board, on the Board of Supervisors. That's what they need, that's what they need. So thank you so much. I've enjoyed serving with you, and we will continue to, you know, work together. All right. Now, I would like to give each of our outgoing members, if you would like, to say something to the rest of us. Oh, I apologize. Dr. Garza and Ben Press. We'll start with Ben Press, who wanted to say something. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While I might not share many of the PG-13 embarrassing memories with you that so many of the board members have shared tonight, I do share an incredible debt of gratitude with the hundreds of thousands of students that are outgoing board members and indeed the entirety of this board have served with such grace and candor. With that said, I'd like to share a few thoughts about each of our outgoing board members. First off, Mr. Velkoff. Thank you for being such a wonderful seatmate and for being such a fountain of wisdom. And I only hope that I can have absorbed some of that wisdom and carry that forward in your absence. But I do want to share something that you said a couple of weeks ago that really stuck with me and has really set the tone for the way that I try to do this work, and I hope many other board members will in the future. And you said that the caring culture in this system starts with us, the school board, and that we set the example for our thousands of teachers, our hundreds of thousands of students, and the community that we all work to serve. And that really stuck with me, because I think that is really what we're all here to do, is set an incredible example. And you were just such a leader there. So thank you for always being that voice of wisdom. To Mr. Stork, remind me to catch up with you after the meeting about your basketball tips and tricks, because those pictures in the back room were really impressive, and I think I need to touch base with you on that. I'd really like to thank you for being such a leader in the area of student health. As you know, that's an area that you and I share a really deep passion for. And for being such an early leader and dedicated, strong voice for those students who might not have been able to share theirs was absolutely needed and has really set the stage for the incredible work that this board and leadership team can carry forward and really set the stage for the discussions that we're having now about student mental health. And my only regret is, you know, we won't have you here at the board table to participate in those discussions, but I look forward to interfacing with you about them in the future and working with you on the county side to make sure that we're providing the resources to students and the community that they need. To Ms. Smith, you know, I have been working with this board in various capacities for about three years now. And I'll never forget the example of courage that you posed on a very important vote in my, in my book, The Later Start Times Vote. And your ability to clearly and coherently state why you are against supporting it and sharing that, that perspective of voting your conscience and representing the community that you served and represented was absolutely inspiring to me. And I just had the greatest respect for you as you did it, because it wasn't that you felt that the issue was somehow wrong or that there was something wrong with the process, but you knew that as a public servant, you had the obligation to represent your community. And that was just so inspiring. So I thank you. I thank you for that. An absolutely great memory. And to Ms. Reed, thank you for always being so willing to lend an ear to the students, for being a mentor and for being kind of a guiding hand when I needed it. You know, Harris and I were talking before, and some of the memories that we've shared with you, everything from start times to budget have just been some of the greatest joys that we've had in our, in our time on the board. So thank you for all that you've done. But I would like to also take this time to not only thank our four outgoing board members, but to thank the entirety of this board for some of the incredible accomplishments that they've had over these last four years. A few of them I'd like to highlight. As I mentioned about Mr. Stork, setting the stage for an incredible conversation, a community-wide conversation about student health, absolutely important, moving forward with later start times, investing in students' mental well-being, physical well-being, and academic success by protecting all students, no matter who they are or what their background, by conducting comprehensive student discipline reform, and keeping the focus on students in everything that you do, by adopting a strategic plan that factors in the critical aspects of success that this board and community have identified. And finally, by hiring an incredible superintendent who has provided great leadership for this school system and inspiring leadership for all the students and staff in this county. So with that, thank you. You are all owed an incredible debt of gratitude, and I look forward to working with the new board in the next six months. Thank you.
And Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I believe that each of these four individuals are very, very special people. And I hope that you each know how very special you are to me and how much I appreciate them. I kind of suspected this would go light, and so I thought, well, I'll make collective comments. And then I'll make sure, if I haven't already told you individually, I'll certainly make concerted effort to do that before the end of this year. I have very much enjoyed working with each of these four individuals. Each of them have served in a variety of different leadership roles, which has created conditions for me. You know, I work closely with all of our board members, but, you know, budget work, you know? We've been in the trenches on some really, really difficult and challenging issues together. So I've had the unique privilege and opportunity to work very closely with each of them. I believe they each represent the very best of what it means to be a public servant. They are dedicated and have worked very hard, committing significant personal time and energy in service to our mission. They are very professional and purposeful, as you heard some comments about that tonight. And they've always done their homework, which I always appreciated. And they've always been thoughtful and constructive contributors to our work. Finally, the greatest compliment that I have for each of them is that they have been ardent and courageous champions for our system and for the children for whom we are responsible. And for that, you will always have my, my respect. Our system is indebted to each and every one of you. I hope that you will always look back with such significant pride for what you have done, your contributions to this system. And I hope you will continue to be proud of the work that we will continue to do based upon, building upon, the great work that you've contributed to. I'm personally indebted to each, each and every one of you. And I will tell you on numerous occasions, you've gotten calls from me, each of you have, on numerous occasions, and you've always provided me with very wise counsel. And I have always appreciated that. And you'll probably continue to get calls from me in the future. I have learned very, very much from each and every one of you, and I will miss you. And I wish you the very best in your future endeavors. And as you've heard before, we have very high hopes for Kathy and Dan. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Well, Mr. Velkoff, do you want to go first? Give us all a good talking, too.
Well, we really want to keep this brief. I just want to say to the employees, you have a courageous leader, and she cares for you, and she fights for you for compensation, she cares about the culture, so you're in good standing there. To the supervisors and the community, I don't think you're ever going to see a leader of a school system who's more ready to work to solve problems, who's more honest and transparent. And I just urge you all to seize the opportunity to make some progress here. And finally, to my fellow members of the board, your job is to keep her here and keep the good things going.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
Can I have some of his time? So I would like to look back and look ahead a little bit. I've had the privilege and honor to serve as the Providence District Representative for the past six years. I'm proud of being a part of this team and of the accomplishments of this board. And you've heard about them tonight. And it's quite an impressive list, hiring Dr. Garza, full-day kindergarten, full-day Mondays, later high school start times, the auditor general, the strategic plan, discipline reform. We were true innovators, all of us. I'm proud of the partnerships that we've created and what we've done by collaborating with members of the community and with special groups that represent certain interests. And I'm looking at you right now. I'm proud of our employees. I'll miss visiting the classrooms where the magic happens. I'll miss sitting onstage at graduations and watching the proud families and celebrating the achievements. I'll miss being a presenter at the Cappies. I'll miss attending the Veterans Day programs and other special community programs at schools, as well as attending numerous annual FCPS events and ceremonies. I'll miss rolling up my sleeves with the staff, my colleagues, and Dr. Garza. I'll even miss the budget. And my colleagues, you know some of the things I won't miss, and there's no need to go into anything more at this moment, other than certain foods that were served at least 100 times in a row, which were very good, but, okay. I hope I've impacted FCPS in some way. Maybe you'll think of me when someone asks a question about, what's the context? Or what's the problem we're trying to fix? Or even, Dr. Garza, you might hear me ringing in your ears, hi, how y'all doing? I thank the dedicated school board office staff, the leadership team, and all of our dedicated employees. Looking ahead, I'll look forward to being a member of the public and watch the board as you address challenges ahead with the CIP, the budget, achievement gaps, teacher workload, compensation, and other easy things like that. I'm going to be looking at new ways to be a public servant. Maybe it'll be in Florida or Virginia. And I also, you know, I'm still a consultant, so who knows? I feel like the world is my oyster and that I have such a great foundation to build on that I want to continue to give back. I think that's really important. I'm looking forward to spending more time with friends and family and my husband, who's here, with my kids, and with my beagle, Abigail. But in the end, it's all about making a difference, isn't it? So I want to close with one of my favorite sayings by Margaret Mead. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, is the only thing that ever has. May we all keep trying to change the world in our own ways. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stork.
Thank you. And Patty, that is one of my favorites as well. And I think we all get a chance to prove that. And I think you've had an opportunity to do that, and you've done it here. And there's so many other ways. I think we all collaboratively can make a difference. The first thing I want to say actually is something that's maybe not positive. And the first thing I'm going to say is, stop it. Stop it. Stop it. Stop it. We're not elevating ourselves to go to the Board of Supervisors. We're partners. There's two different boards here. I'm fed up. I've heard this said from many of you here, and I am fed up with hearing it. And if you don't act like it, then you're going to be what you act like, right? So if you act like it's an elevation or whatever, yeah, that's garbage. We are partners in this process. We serve the county. We serve everybody in this county. And we have a particular niche, maybe the most important one, although there's plenty of argument. But the bottom line is, we are partners. And I'm moving over to the Board of Supervisors. I'm moving off of the school board. And I have sure loved my time on the school board. I believe made some difference. But just importantly, I'm looking forward to making some differences there and looking forward to the collaboration, which is truly what the Constitution of Virginia and what, why we have elected school board, is that we recognize that's an important, critical collaboration. There's two more distinct voices sometimes, but there clearly is choruses that sing together. And I think we have an opportunity to do that. And there will be different parts in that song, for sure. But I think we have a chance to continue to sing together and hopefully change some of the sounds so it's a little bit more consonant and not so dissonant. And that, I think, is truly an opportunity. In the end, I know that our mission is very important, and that mission is student learning. It's, and I use the word carefully, student learning. It's not about classrooms. It's not about buildings. It's not about, it's not about walls. It's not about books. It's not even about teachers. It's about our kids' learning. Yes, I know those are all important elements of it, but in the end, having a kid learn, having a child learn is what we have to find a way to do. And I just keep your eye on, if you will, that one, because I think that's truly the core. And I think especially, and you all will see more of this than even I have, is how much learning's going to change with, and how much already has changed, but how much more it's going to change with the advent of computers and other methods for helping kids learn. And we're seeing pieces of that, and there's going to be a lot more. And we just need to keep ourselves open. I know, Dr. Garza, we've talked about a little bit of that, and I know you have some ideas to that, and you'd love to have some money to be able to do that. And I'd love to find a way to get the school board to have some money to do some of that innovation, because that's what Fairfax County Schools must be all about. So that's my passion. I'm going to obviously carry that forward. But in the end, what I take out of this personally is something that I value above all others, which is the relationships that we have, not only among ourselves, but with constituents, with the kids. I mean, who can sit on this board and be in meeting after meeting, hour after hour, and then walk out and go to a dedication, a 60th anniversary dedication of an elementary school where the gym is filled with K through sixth grade kids? And it is just electric. I mean, just the kids are squealing and screaming and just, you know, the energy from that, you just want to bottle it up because you know it's going to carry you through the next, you know, couple of weeks of meetings. So that's one part of the relationship. But what we do together is, I think, maybe the most important one, is how we can help each other reach our full potential. And that's, that's really all of our challenges and what we're all working on and what we're continuing to maybe not do as well as we should. And I can think of 10 things that I wish I had done better and a few things I'm really pleased with. But anyhow, I'm going to I'm going to stop with what I started when I first got on the school board 12 years ago, and I sat, I think, I think I was sitting right down there where Tammy was sitting, next to Dan Dominich, and we, and we were all asked to, if we had any particular thoughts in our school, our first meeting, anything we wanted to say, and I've, it's the first meeting, so you're all a little bit nervous, not really sure what to say, and, and I'm going to use a Lincoln quote that I've always enjoyed and I try to keep in mind, which is, "Better to remain, better to remain silent and be thought a fool than to speak out and remove all doubt." So, so I, I've worked on that, I mean, I've succeeded on occasion, but, but anyways, so, thanks, Abe. Thank you all.
And Ms. Smith.
Oh, thank you. You know, it's hard to believe how almost 14 years goes by in a blink, but you reflect on certain parts of, of the time. And I remember when I first got elected to the board, and Dan Dominich was the superintendent, and I think it was the day after election, I went into his office, and I'm sitting there with him, and he's got twinkly eyes and smiling, and I'm in numb, and he said something to me that has resonated with me and stayed with me and has been proven time and time again. And he said, "What you will find is Fairfax County Public Schools is so great because of the people that work here." And I have seen that over and over and over again, the commitment, the dedication, the passion, the compassion for these kids in our school system, and it's what makes us so great. And we're also a great school system because we don't have churn, we don't turn people over, we have superintendents that stay with us for a long time, and, and superintendents help change direction, and so to those of you left, the feed and caring of your superintendent is so important. We have such a strong leader, and we have strong leaders all through our system, our principals, our teachers, our custodians, our food service workers, our bus drivers, that are all involved with our kids. And, and I know you will work hard to continue that, that this stays a great system. It is so funny that people think that I'm, you know, Ms. Strategic Governance, because when we went down that process, it wasn't something I was sure I liked. I liked being instruction chair, I liked, I was a teacher, I liked those details. And yes, I cried at some of those meetings because I had to go through an epiphany, and I realized that the strength of leadership for a school board is to set the direction and to hold those responsible to do the work, hold their feet to the fire. You let them make the decisions, and if they go well, great, if they don't, you have to hold them, their feet to the fire and say, "Change it, it's not working." And so, you know, when I reflect on the easy things, the hard things, the boundary studies, not easy stuff, but oh my goodness, the student achievement calls. I saw the difference that made in how people talk in our schools, how kids work, that the, the responsibility of the community, the projects kids are doing. We did financial literacy before the state came out and did it, that, that set a direction for this system that's still moving forward. So I urge you, when you want to get in the weeds, to step back, let the staff get in the weeds and help set that direction. We need to keep moving forward. We have always valued the arts and, and keeping those things in our schools, and Dan and I are going to work hard to share the truth in our new positions, because we know the truth of all the hard work and all the cuts that have happened here. And the last thing I need to address is my family, because when you go into this service, it's not easy on a family, and my kids were younger when I started. I have four children, and I've always respected Megan, that you've been able to know when you had to be with your family and not at a board meeting. I so much didn't have that ability. And my son Andrew, I still remember, it was his 18th birthday, and there was a school board meeting, and I said, "No, honey, this is my job," you know? So it's hard to do that balance, but it's been a great ride, I've really enjoyed it, I love this school system. It gave my poor kids a great education, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank staff and the audience for indulging us. This only happens once every four years, and it's 35 combined years of service, we had to spend some time celebrating that, so, but we do have, in our last board meeting together, we do still have some business to do, so here we go. Item 3.06, Student Representative Matters, I call on Mr. Press.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and now for the next two hours of regular programming. So it was mentioned to me in our meeting, before the meeting, that traffic was bad out on Gallows Road, it make, made some people's commute a little bit difficult. With that said, I think someone in the audience had the most difficult commute, a little over 3,000 miles, so I'd like to thank Harris Latif for being here, it's great to see you as always. I've been very busy wrapping up the year in a flurry of meetings, and I use the word flurry with a grain of irony, just because it's end of December almost, and we're having 70-degree weather. I know Mr. McElveen and I are both, both hoping that that word flurry will come in the weather forecast at some point soon. I'd like to say a brief thank you to the SGA of Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology for being so welcoming to me and Mr. Moon, who were able to join them a couple of weeks ago for a really interesting discussion about their priorities as a school and their opinions on school board initiatives. Particularly interesting were the discussions on their renovation, their unique academic programming, and student advocacy, particularly in the way it relates to student mental health. One of the points that they really drove home was that when students are empowered to self-advocate, their stress levels are reduced. If a student can go in and say, you know, "Mr. So-and-so, I have three tests today, would it be possible to reschedule?" And they can collaborate to make sure that that workload is something that's conducive to learning, in all ways, we, as a school system, do a better job. So empowering those students is absolutely critical, and that's an important takeaway that I want to do share with you all. I'd also, again, like to thank the students and staff of Robinson Secondary School for having us once again at their school for a student advisory council meeting. This particular meeting was our annual food tasting, which was always a very good time. I was fortunate enough to be joined by Mr. McElveen, Mr. Smith, and Dr. Lipp there for that food tasting and a discussion with Ms. Klemenko on grading policy. Very important continuation of that discussion, particularly, you know, relating to schools' individual practices and how we can build equity there. I, I did want to share that there were some very interesting food offerings shared, moving towards the soup vision for lunch service, and students particularly were interested by the zucchini muffins that were there, so I figured I'd share that with you all, as that might be coming down the pipes for cafeteria service soon. I'd also like to thank the students who joined the board at our kickoff for our student leadership cohort this year. These students are absolutely outstanding leaders who have an incredibly unique opportunity to influence policy at the highest levels of the school communities that they're, that they're in, and I look forward to working with them over the course of the year to bring about the change that they hope to see in their schools. I also, finally, would like to mention and thank the student government of Westfield High School for welcoming to their, welcoming me to their school earlier this week. I was fortunate enough to be able to congratulate them on their state football championship last weekend at UVA. We had a really good discussion about growth in that part of the county, student enrollment, how that's changing their school, and also the role that grading policy plays in student stress and how we can ensure that homework is limited over breaks. This is a, a critical thing that I wanted to thank Dr. Garza and her leadership team for, making sure that our community understands, our, our leadership in schools understands the importance of allowing students to enjoy their breaks for what they are, and that's a time to spend with friends and family. So thank you for, for driving that point home, and I look forward to, to making that more robust in the future. Finally, tonight, it's a little bittersweet for me to announce this, but the upcoming student representative to the school board election will be held on February 9th, 2016, at Woodson High School. It's a little weird, given that I'm only halfway through my term, and I'm already thinking about who will be sitting in this chair come a year from now, but I would highly encourage board members to join us there. It's a really interesting process and gives a really good insight as to what the sentiments of students are, particularly in regards to current issues that are coming forward. If there are any applicants out there watching, number one, good for you, good start. It's open to all high school students, with the exception of seniors from anywhere in the county, and I would highly encourage you to reach out to your leadership teachers and your administration to make sure that you can get the requisite materials. Applications will be due in mid-January if you are interested in running. I highly encourage you, again, to reach out to me so I can speak with you, interface with you, one-on-one about what the job actually entails. So with that, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to have this time to speak, thank our departing board members, and I look forward to a wonderful new year and remaining six months with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Item 3.07, Strategic Plan, Goal One, Student Success Report, I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, you will be receiving the first part of the Goal One report from our strategic plan, Ignite. This report is the second report that the board has received on the progress of our strategic plan that's being implemented and in our progress on the various aspects of the plan. We've, this is a transition year, moving from our OEs to our strategic plan reports. We certainly look forward to continuing to get your feedback, and will continue to modify the metrics over the coming year to ensure that they provide you and our stakeholders with meaningful data reflecting our progress. Our first goal, student success, is stated, "We commit to reach, challenge, and prepare every student for success in school and in life." This report has been divided into two parts due to the length and the volume of information contained in the report. So we do have a work session scheduled for a discussion of the report that you'll see tonight, and it's quite lengthy, the report is, you have a report and then PowerPoint that you're going to be provided tonight. So we'll have an opportunity to thoroughly discuss elements of this report at an upcoming work session. We will then present the second part to you on January the 21st. There will be also another work session following that to delve into that one more deeply, and then we'll be asking you to formally approve the full report on February the 18th. So there's quite a number of meetings scheduled to talk about this most important goal, student success, and I would also say, board members, I'm quite proud of the number of meetings that we've had in this school year, work sessions and board meetings, where there has been a lot of time and attention focused on student learning. And I think these reports are evident of just, you know, how this has to be a priority. I also want to thank the entire team, these, these are very difficult to put together and compile, so Dr. Duran will be presenting it, but I know I'm quite mindful of the fact that many people in FCPS have helped complete this report. Now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Francisco Duran, our Chief Academic Officer, and this will be his first report to the school board. So, Dr. Duran, it's all yours.
Thank you, good evening, and what a, what a great act to follow, and for those of you that are, this is your last night on the board, what a great way to end by you having established a phenomenal strategic plan and getting to hear a report on our student success. So, kudos to all of you, and, and although, I mean, who scheduled me to come after that, I might have a little conversation with you later, but nevertheless, it was a great sentiment to hear everyone. And I do have to acknowledge Dr. Kathy Oliver and Noel Klemenko, Jen Glazer, and Karen Williams, who are here tonight, and so many others who helped put this report together. So good evening again to Chairwoman Hines, members of the board, Dr. Garza, and public. It is certainly a pleasure to be able to present my first report to you in my almost two months, tomorrow will be two months, being a part of this great team, and it's been a wonderful opportunity to begin to look at this report and also learning about the great work that's being done here. So tonight, as Dr. Garza said, we will be focusing on Strategies 1 and 2 of the report, and you will again be able to hear more conversation and have much more discussion at our work session next month. Tonight's presentation is also supplemented by a summary narrative of our work that's happening here in FCPS, so I greatly encourage you to look at that narrative, which is over 30 pages. The first desired outcome in the strategic plan is that our curriculum will reflect Portrait of a Graduate outcomes in all content areas where students are appropriately challenged. A number of innovative projects are underway to support our goal of rigorous instruction and Portrait of a Graduate outcomes, and we could spend hours and hours sharing with those with you tonight, but we've chosen a few. This work that we're going to, again, is ongoing, and there's daily, daily discussions on this, but for the purpose of tonight, we're going to share with you our report on our teacher planning and pacing guide work, the creation of our Portrait of a Graduate rubrics, and also expanding our curriculum resources to support project-based learning. We are currently in development and field testing of elementary planning and placing guides for mathematics, social studies, and language arts. These documents will provide a division-wide comprehensive tool to support planning, teaching, and assessing for student learning. This exciting work is being achieved with ongoing collaboration and input from our classroom teachers, which is very important. The contributions of our teachers have strengthened our curriculum even further through this process, and they are going to only help us deepen our implementation. In addition, these pacing guides will facilitate the development of our Portrait of a Graduate attributes, in particular, communication, collaboration, critical, and creative thinking. Currently, the work on Portrait of a Graduate is in the development stage of working on our rubrics to support students and teachers in measuring growth toward our five attributes. These rubrics will be broken down by each attribute and by each grade band in a way to offer teachers the opportunity to select appropriate criteria for a particular assessment. The intention, of course, is not to require the use of these rubrics, but to offer them as a resource to help embed those attributes into content and assessment that will help enrich teaching and learning experiences even further. As an example of one of those enriching learning experiences, we are expanding the use of project-based learning across our division. This student-centered strategy is one of our key initiatives to help students achieve outcomes set forth in Portrait of a Graduate. For the past two years, many schools have already begun to incorporate project-based learning, and to date, we have trained over 750 teachers thus far. We are continuing to provide additional training to those 750 teachers and are simultaneously training instructional leaders and teacher leaders that can in turn go back and provide that knowledge to their schools. Our ultimate goal in this process is for all of our teachers at each school to receive this job embedded training in order for our curriculum in all content areas to appropriately challenge every student. To demonstrate how we are currently supporting students in reaching their full potential, the board has established key metrics in the strategic plan that I would like to share with you now, connected to this desired outcome. The first two metrics are broken out, first by ethnicity and second by subgroup. The next two slides will outline the percent of graduates who passed at least one AP, IB, or dual enrollment course. As you can see on this slide, our results have been fairly stable across the three years, with a gap between the performance of Asian and white students as opposed to those of our Black and Hispanic students. Further examining this data by subgroup, we again see that the results have been stable across the last three years for our economically disadvantaged students and our students with disabilities. At the same time, our limited English proficiency students passing at least one of these courses has slightly decreased. So while we see some positive results in what's happening here, we also note our challenges and our growth areas of opportunity. A key indicator in helping students achieve their full potential and foster lifelong learning is ensuring that our students graduate on time. On this slide, our on-time graduation rate by ethnicity has remained relatively stable for all Asian, all students, Asian students, and for our white students, and our graduation rate has remained one of the highest in the nation and certainly in our Commonwealth. As our indicator for ongoing progress- As our indicator for ongoing progress, you can see that since 2001, our graduat -- 2011, excuse me, our graduation rate for Black students has increased by 2.3%, and for our Hispanic students, it has increased by 2.2%. This is a point of pride for our school system as we are eleven-point-five points higher than our national -- than the national average, and we are two percentage points higher than the Commonwealth rate. But again, while we are doing very well, we want to make sure that we have all students graduating our ultimate goal. As we look at the on-time graduation rate by subgroup, we can again see that it has remained relatively stable and high compared to other states and certainly compared to other districts within the Commonwealth for all students, for economically disadvantaged students, and for students with disabilities. A growth opportunity to highlight here is in the area of our limited English proficient students. Their on-time graduation rate has decreased since 2001-11. However, it is important to note that while our four-year graduation rate of limited English proficient students has not improved, their anytime graduation rate has to eighty-one-point-eight percent. Nationally, the graduation rates for students with limited English proficient is sixty-two-point-six, so we're slightly higher. In the Commonwealth, it is forty-eight-point-two for our limited English proficient, so we are twenty points higher. But again, being higher and being at the top is not just our only goal. Our other goal is making sure we have it for all, so we have some points of pride and some area to work. As we further examine student success, it is important to look at student achievement beyond just standards of learning data. One way we are doing this, and it was a way that was generated by this board, is through the Global Awareness Technology Project work. This project is completed by groups of two to four students who collaboratively respond to a question comparing different cultures studied throughout the school year. Projects are scored, measuring understanding of content, expression, research, and technology use. As you can see, there continues to be growth in these areas since 2011, and this type of assessment exemplifies one way that we can measure student attainment of the attributes described in the Portrait of a Graduate, and we are continuing to seek more ways to do that. The next two metrics for our first desired outcome overlap those in other outcomes. This particular metric, which is the percentage overall and by subgroup of students meeting college and workforce readiness benchmarks, will be incorporated into our report on metric in Strategy Four, so you will hear about this in our later presentation. We are continuing to examine ways to better assess our students' readiness for college and career. That is an important connection to the work we do. And when we think about that, we're not just looking at four-year college, two-year opportunities, but truly workforce opportunities that we see happening right here in our area in Fairfax County, talking and looking with our partners, the business community, and seeing jobs that are left vacant because our students in our local economy, we don't have them prepared for those positions and they're having to go out elsewhere. One of those, we heard yesterday from the governor in cybersecurity, and the amount of cybersecurity jobs that are vacant, and we have many employers going and looking elsewhere outside of Virginia. The next data point, which is very important for us to discuss with the addition of PISA, will be reported also during Strategy Four. Our second desired outcome is a great one for us and one that needs our ongoing attention, and that is on reducing our achievement gaps for our students. The FCPS Office of Program Evaluation recently completed a math curriculum study focusing in our advanced mathematics program. This study specifically examined the availability of advanced math classes across our elementary schools. In addition, it looked at the rate of inclusion of students who demonstrated high aptitude on standardized tests and those that were taking these advanced courses. We are currently working jointly with our regions, our principals, and our math leaders to find a way to ensure a more equitable and targeted approach to advanced math opportunities at the elementary level. To further establish this outcome, we have established elementary mathematics leader meetings in order to build common understanding and for teacher practices for all students. One indication that students are being appropriately challenged in mathematics is also the successful completion of algebra in eighth grade. As you can see, we have a large percent of students doing that, again, compared to the national average in the Commonwealth, but not at the highest rate that we want to see, and in fact, we have seen decreases for some students in our own division since 2012. So again, a point of pride, but an area to work on. With students' scores declining, we again see decreases across our subgroups in this area, and we are making sure that we watch this metric very closely as it will be a key in monitoring our work in strengthening the elementary mathematics program. We can't expect students to pass successfully Algebra I if we don't have a strong foundation in our elementary math program, and so that is an area that we are working on jointly. To enhance instructional practices in the area of literacy, we have identified five levers for improvement. First, our all-county principal meetings are now focused on literacy, with principals learning best practices in leading literacy instruction. Second, elementary leaders who focused on literacy from across the division are gaining common understanding of literacy across the curriculum in regular professional learning opportunities. Third, we have begun to develop a plan for the early identification of students with reading issues, including dyslexia. This plan that we are currently developing includes universal, division-wide screening of students that is consistent and common across the division, and includes a diagnostic assessment and instruments for various levels of intervention depending upon what is found. And I'm pleased to announce that we have recently hired a full-time dyslexia specialist who will begin with us on January 4th to help us with this work. A fourth level is the professional development we offer our teachers during the summer, in particular, our elementary summer literacy symposium. Last year, we were able to train fourteen-hundred elementary teachers to acquire better literacy practices, and we are very excited and continuing on in that work. Our fifth and final lever that we are focused on is the creation of four literacy resources. We have begun to revise our writing rubrics, K-12, and give them through the means of teacher input, opportunities for teachers to use as a guide for their instruction. We have also begun to work with a consultant and with our principals and teacher leaders on a secondary literacy framework, and it is in the middle of being developed, and it will eventually be able to provide expectations for reading and writing instruction, not just in English and language arts classes at the secondary level, but across all contents. Third, we are also working on a literacy progression chart that will help teachers support understanding of instructional emphasis at the elementary level. And last, in the area of literacy, we have revised our Great Beginnings content to include a more focused emphasis on literacy instruction, and as you know, Great Beginnings is our program for our new teachers. National studies have shown that students who do not read proficiently by third grade are four times more likely to drop out of high school. This metric, which the board has established as a metric with regards to our literacy, shows promising work underway to ensure that our students achieve their full potential, but also opportunities for growth. Our Grade III SOL pass rates for reading have improved in all ethnic groups. Although there was a slight dip in 2014, all 2015 pass rates are slightly higher than they were in 2013. We are six points above the state pass rate for our third-grade SOL rates. So again, we're doing better, but we're not where we yet need to be. Common theme. Grade III SOL pass rates for reading improved from 2014 to 2015 in our subgroups. 2015 pass rates for economically disadvantaged and limited English proficient students were only slightly higher, but again, improvement, and the pass rate for students with disabilities was slightly lower. So again, we see some promising work here. We're ahead of everyone else, but we're not yet where we need to be and want to be. Our five levers for improved literacy will further help us to continue and accelerate our upward trend. As you saw with our on-time graduation rates, we have a challenge with our English language learners. To address this challenge, we have instituted an enhanced ESOL programming pilot at Lee and Stewart High Schools. Students at these two schools are enrolled in content courses which offer them standard credit, where prior, they were taking courses to support English as a second language and not receiving credit, which was taking them off track for graduation. In addition, our students at these two schools are provided socio-emotional supports and have counselors to attend to their needs specifically, putting them on a true path to graduation, and we look forward to expanding the implementation of this school within a school model and new credit-bearing courses to all high schools that have our English language learner population. I believe when we do that, we will see great gains in the graduation of our English language learners. In addition to meeting the challenge, though, of on-time graduation, we also must ensure that our English language learners are becoming proficient in English. This slide shows the percentage of English learners who demonstrated competency and progress on our WIDA access and our VDOE growth measures. The current state target for English language development is sixty-eight percent, and in 2014, 2015, we had eighty-one percent. So again, we much -- we exceeded the target and we met it. We're doing better than most, but we're not where we need to be. Sound like a broken record? Elementary age students tend to make faster progress than their English -- in their English proficiency than students in middle and high school, so we know that that is an area that we must continue to address. This is consistent with national data when we look at English language learners as well. But again, we're slightly higher, but again, not where we need to be. We have now looked at math, literacy, and ESOL performance, and only a snapshot of each, because we could be here for a few weeks if we really dug into everything we're doing. And as you can see, the achievement gap remains to be the most significant student achievement challenge that we currently face. Our Closing the Achievement Gap Plan that we have begun to institute is research-based, has been created by staff and community leaders, and is a resource for schools to address our achievement gap. The plan is composed of strategies related to the drivers that you see on the screen of academic support, relationships, college and career readiness, school and family, access to rigor, and ready-to-learn. Since 2014, we have now ensured through working with our RAS and our principals that all schools have Closing the Achievement Gap strategies in their school improvement plans. This year, the Closing Achievement Gap Project Team and Steering Committee has focused on updating goals and actions on actions for schools, supports for offices and regions, and metrics to measure success. The Closing Achievement Gap Team is also learning from successful strategies in prior projects that were done in the division and our current one in the Project Momentum Initiative to help us close our gaps. In this slide, we take an explicit look at the achievement gap related to reading performance. While our system has made gains in closing achievement gaps over time, when the SOL tests changed, there was a widening of the gap in our results, as you see between the two charts. The one on the far left was prior to the new standards. The one on the right is our current standards. In the past school year, Black and Hispanic students made six percentage point gains in reading performance, and while this is great progress, an achievement gap still persists in our students' reading performance. So again, we're making progress. We're doing better than most, but we're not where we need to be. Looking at the achievement gap related to math performance, we continue to see progress with Black students making five percentage point gains and Hispanic students making four percentage gains. However, an achievement gap in math remains. While it is important to look at pass rates, pass rates don't tell the whole story. The metrics used to report achievement gap has an impact on how we interpret the results. This graph here reports the achievement gap in terms of average scale scores instead of straight pass rates. Pass rates reduce the information on an individual student's score to a simple yes or no. The student passed, or they did not pass, based upon a line drawn in the sand, wherever that may be. However, we have more information, as you see here, on the student's score than a simple yes or no. Scaled scores take into account students' progress on tests, even when they do not pass. Examining the data in this way, we can see that since 2013, our Hispanic and Black students have demonstrated increases in scaled scores that do not necessarily transfer over to the same increases in our pass rates. If we continue to accelerate our progress, implement some of the things that we mentioned already today and many others, we will be able to see an increase in our pass rates as well, but we must continue to look at both. Our scores in math tell the same tale. As you can see, again, our Black and Hispanic students have shown increases on their scale scores since 2012, and while we continue to make sure we're looking at this data, we continue to see an achievement gap is in place. So we're doing better, but the gap is still there. So as we continue to look at our reading and math scores, we must look at all available data points and ensure that our metrics tell the complete story of our student achievement. We must also have program evaluations to see what's truly happening and not happening in our schools. On this slide, you can see we've had two program evaluations that have been completed and two that are in progress. You've already heard me briefly mention the direct impact that the program evaluations has had with regards to our math curriculum study, which was done to address the access students have to advanced mathematics and the work and the action we've already begun in that area. But in addition, we had a study done about strengthening the elementary reading program for all FCPS students, and that was completed to extend the understanding of elementary reading performance, our instructional approaches used by schools. As we saw, some schools used different approaches. We needed to have a complete understanding of what approaches were being used and what differences were there across our division so that we could provide better support, so that actionable steps can be taken to improve the reading outcome for all students. And we are using those results as we look and develop our literacy plan. We are also now currently in the progress of an English language learner study, which is looking to identify and classify structures and approaches supported by research to determine the extent to which our current structures and approaches reflect those found in the research. So we want to do a crosswalk and compare the two. We are also in this study looking to examine our performance of our English learners at a deeper level and to understand any relationships among organizational structures, instructional approaches, and the performance that we see with our students. And finally, this study will also look at a better understanding of how we're utilizing our funds for English language learners. our funds for English language learners in supporting their work. On the horizon is a study of the long-term impact of early childhood education. Although we all know the impact is a positive one, we want to have some deeper understandings in our own system. The purpose of this project is really to identify whether differences exist in academic and behavioral outcomes among students with various types of preschool experiences and which of those experiences have which type of impact. You will also learn much more about our work on preschool in our Strategy Three presentation, which is focused primarily on that. We are now on the third of our four desired outcomes for Strategy One. So we can take a breath. We're almost there. And this third one is focused on teachers, students, and parents will have access to contemporary and effective technology resources. We, I think I skipped a slide. We have many tools within our digital ecosystem which have, which currently provide access to contemporary and effective technology resources, and this has been a great area of work that has been done. Some of this work you see on this slide includes Google Apps for Education, FCPS 24/7 Learning, Tumblebrook Library, and others that you see on the screen. Overall, we have seen consistent or increased usage of these tools within our instructional programming. As an example, the use of Google Apps for Education has increased by over a hundred and seventeen percent by student logins since we began to use this. During our last school year, three point six million assessments were taken in Horizon, providing students and teachers data to guide instruction and learning. Our library information services provides six centrally purchased databases and two digital book collections. And since we began to use this, students and teachers have accessed it over eleven million times. We are excited that these tools are coming together to form an integrated system to support our student learning through technology. As we further ensure that teachers have access to effective technology resources, we must also begin to align and develop standards in our professional development to help them in that work. We also, as this metric is, was put into our strategic plan looking at evaluation, in that we must now begin to work with human resources on ways that we can appropriately measure the integration of technology into our teacher evaluation process, as it currently is not directly aligned. As a means of integrating technology into the curriculum, we have a goal of also implementing one device per student, and we've begun to discuss this through our Digital Transformation Committee and through some pilots. One I'd like to share with you at this time, our E-Learning Backpack Grant Project Pilot. Currently, we have six high schools who have qualified for this pilot through the Virginia E-Learning Backpack Grant. Starting with current ninth graders, every student at these high schools will be receiving a computing device. This grant will ensure that all students have a computing device, and eventually, over four years, it builds in ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. This is happening at Stewart, Mount Vernon, Lee, Fairfax Adult, Annandale, and Falls Church. Falls Church and Annandale are still in the planning phases of development, where the other four have begun at the ninth grade. We hope to, again, expand this learning and take this to all schools. As students continue to receive devices to use at school, it is necessary to ensure that digital citizenship is integrated into our curriculum. And to, to that end, we have established a new cross-curricular digital citizenship team that has delivered training on the facets of digital citizenship and developed a new website of resources on technology integration. Our final desired outcome for Strategy One is centralized support available to schools and school staff based on student achievement needs. We've begun to do this in many ways, but again, to highlight one tonight and one that has been very successful, it is our Project Momentum work. On October nineteenth, this board, you heard a presentation on this exciting work and the positive impact it has already made on our students. The strategies listed on this slide are the means of centrally-supported differentiated support for our students in greatest need. We are constantly seeking ways to better provide support for our students based on their achievement needs at all levels, whether that be those in greatest need or those students who are performing at the highest level as well. As you have heard, there is great work happening in our system to enhance instructional practices to ensure that all students receive an education in a dynamic environment designed to foster lifelong learning. And we are doing it in ways that outshines the nation and our Commonwealth. While we are proud of this work, we are also continue to focus on the need to ensure that every child is successful and not just be number one. We want all of our students to be successful. Strategy Two is that all students will achieve their full potential through the use of assessment and data systems for decision-making that support student attainment of the outcomes defined by the portrait of a graduate. I will now present the three desired outcomes connected to this strategy. And it was great to hear yesterday at the governor's budget release that he's also connected to this when he talked about the SOL Innovation Committee work and the move towards adaptive testing. Performance-based assessments are a balanced assessment system that better measures students' progress towards meeting portrait of a graduate attributes. They replace more traditional types of assessments to assess deeper understandings, not just facts and not just skills. Because working and surviving in the real world, where we hope our students, it's not just about memorizing, it's about being able to problem solve. It's about being able to take and create solutions based upon what you do know. We are no longer in the age where you can just memorize and then go work and survive in the real world. To support teachers in this shift, many professional learning opportunities have been offered. In addition, we have worked with teachers to create content-aligned sample assessments that they are ready to use. We recently, as of a couple of weeks ago, brought together a group of teachers, one from each region, to look at our district, division-level benchmarks and to ensure that they were properly aligned. And it was a great experience. And as I welcomed the teachers that morning, there was such level of excitement, and they were really thankful to be able to look again at our assessments. We can't just create them once. We have to constantly make sure they're aligned to the work that we're doing. These actions position us not only to be in alignment with the recommendations by the SOL Innovation Committee, but we're shooting higher to be ahead and to be implementing those recommendations well before the state requires them of us. And we're excited, again, about the governor's announcement about adaptive testing at yesterday's govern, budget release. While performance-based assessments are being developed, we continue to monitor student achievement in different ways. This graph shows composite data for reading and math for grades three, six, and eight, and composite data for all core subjects for graduates. The drop you see from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve reflects the new mathematics standards and delivery, along with new social studies standards in that year. In two thousand and thirteen, there were new mathematics questions, as well as new reading standards in a format. Taking into account these challenges, our recent results have been consistent with moderate increases since two thousand, in our two thousand and fifteen results. Our second desired outcome in Strategy Two is data tools will be available to schools, school teams, and individual teachers to diagnose and monitor individual student progress. This is an area that we must put much attention into and an area we must ensure that we're giving teachers what they need to better understand what their students are learning and what their students need to learn more of. Data tools that are currently available track student performance on benchmarks, integrate intervention plans, and monitor individual student progress. To enhance our data tools, we've recently focused on our responsive instruction functionality in our EDSL system, which is going to allow schools, administrators, principals, and teachers the ability to identify students' needs regarding those that would need support to be able to document problem-solving analysis, intervention design, and monitor student progress in response to intervention. Another way we are currently monitoring the outcomes of student performance in our Project Momentum schools is our Division's data team. This team provides each intensive school with tools and training to optimize the use of student performance data. And while I've just described two specific tools that we are currently using, we are continuing to engage with schools and teachers and find other ways and ideas on how we can provide them with a comprehensive data toolbox. And again, this is certainly a work in progress, but an exciting one. Our final desired outcome is that grading will be an accurate reflection of learning. We are now into our second year of examining grading practices at the secondary level in particular, in an effort to develop policies and recommendations to you that will ensure consistent practices across our schools that yield grades that are an accurate reflection of learning. And you heard from our student delegate about a meeting he recently went to where we're engaging students. So as we continue this process, we are engaging students, we're engaging teachers, we're engaging principals to begin to bring their voice to the table before we make any policy recommendations. We also will be beginning to anticipate work in engaging our parents during this process in order, and that will happen in the spring, to ensure eventually that all stakeholders have had the opportunity to be a part of this process before we make recommendations to you. As an offshoot of this work, we will also continue and are looking closely at homework practices to ensure that students are receiving reasonable and purposeful homework assignments. And I know many of you have emailed us on that as well, and emailed me in particular. You have now heard how we've incorporated the results of the mathematics and reading program evaluations into our teaching and learning, and we will continue to identify programs for evaluation with a specific aim of evaluating the initiatives that are included in this report. The work done for Strategies One and Two in our first goal are very important elements of our students' success, and they are helping us to enhance our instructional practices and ensure that all of our students, again, not just being at the top of the Commonwealth, not just being at the top of the nation, but all of our students are achieving their full potential. Division-wide, we are aligning our work to support the outcomes and actions of Portrait of a Graduate and the Strategic Plan. It is exciting tonight to present our efforts in a new way with achievement drivers clearly articulated to ensure that the projects and the work that we are doing directly undertake an influence in the work that needs to happen for our students. While there is much more work to be done, we do have much to celebrate, as you saw. The Strategic Plan will help us to only continue to hone our focus to make certain that we reach, that we challenge, and that we prepare every student for success in school and success in life. And I look forward to having further discussions and questions with you on January eleventh. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the excellent report and for your patience and stamina. We don't always go this late. It really is an excellent report. We will have time for a work session. This is a lot to digest. And so if, I, I had a couple of board members raise their hand. I think if we just have sort of quick clarifying questions, that would be fine, but we really want to keep it brief. So Ms. Schultz?
Couple of quick compliments. Obviously, I'm over here doing a cheer dance on dyslexia and digital citizenship actions. That's going to be significantly important to our kids. PISA, where's the money coming from now that we don't have the grant? You don't have to answer that, but I think we need to know. I do have a couple of very quick clarifying questions. Can we go to slide eighteen?
Bear with me while I get there. Yes?
No. Yes, no.
No?
Yes. Yes.
That's our Algebra I completion by subgroup.
So you swapped colors on me, because students with disabilities used to be orange. It's now green. It's the worst color for it. I don't know where we are on this and if we can differentiate, if it's the types of disabilities that are causing this, but, I mean, we're going in the wrong direction. And so this is a, sort of an annual plea of mine. If there's more information that's behind those statistics of why this is headed in the wrong direction, I'd love to know at some future point, but this is really concerning.
I'm not sure that we've ever reported out in this report Algebra I completion, have we?
But what this
By eighth grade?
The reason I'm so concerned is because what this does, what, what this shows, if, if the downward slide is that way, it means that the tracking for kids with disabilities starts early in terms of the identification, eh, they can't, they can't make these higher math options. And I think they get tracked for reasons of disabilities into slower-paced math, because they're clearly nowhere in, I mean, they're way off the chart compared to any of their peers in terms of completing Algebra I. And that sets them up. That sets them up long-term. And, you know, where are the twice-exceptional kids? Those are buried in there, too. So
Ms. Schultz, if I could, just, that sounds like a good conversation for us to have at the work session. So we're hoping for
I'm highlighting issues that I'm going to want to talk about that are very clear. Can we go to slide twenty-four? This is something that I've had teachers come to me and talk to me about. The WIDA, the, you know, are these ELL students passing their SOLs? And I know that that's like, you know, if they're not passing a WIDA, but they're passing the SOLs, is there a different way that we can manifest that as a, as an achievement? Because I think there's a big disconnect between the way the WIDA is making them retake and retake and retake, but they may have actually passed or passed proficient on their SOLs, but they're not passing the WIDA. So tuck that in our back pocket. And then slide twenty-six, I'm going to ask sort of a difficult question. So I've never heard this question asked before. Are the Black and Hispanic and Asian students that are represented in this slide differentiated at all on whether or not they speak English or they're ELL? Or is everybody lumped together just purely by ethnicity?
For this slide, they're all lumped in by ethnicity purely, for this particular, for this particular slide.
Okay. Well, but, I mean, this slide, but, you know, it's, it's a reoccurring theme. So the reason I ask is, is that because we are a melting pot, we may have a lot of students that are represented in the Hispanic, the Black, or even the Asian that are not English-speaking. And therefore, I'm wondering how, like, if there isn't a disaggregated version of this that's a little bit more informational? Because if you have a Black student from Senegal who doesn't, who is an English learning language student and isn't achieving, that's not the same as a student that's a Black student who is, you know
I think, I think we, we get the gist of where you're going there.
Okay.
Yeah. So we can certainly look into that. I think that's a good question for the work session.
Because I'd like to know, like, if, if we're inherently behind on a student who's been here, you know, from kindergarten and is an English-speaking, native English-speaking student, is, is the, is the gap rate the same? And so I think that's something that may be a little bit insightful. It may not be insightful, I don't know, but without knowing that, and I know it's a difficult thing, and I'm not expecting any answers here, but I think we should look at that. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Not for tonight, but one of my colleagues, if possible, for the A work session discussion in January. There were several graphs showing the, a data related to students from economically disadvantaged background and also LEP, Limited English Proficiency, that I wonder whether between those two categories those two categories, groups of students, whether there is much overlap? You know, if you could tell us the extent of overlap, whether there is, you know, whether it is possible to extract a non-overlap portion in how they are performing? Because I bet that there is just some compounding impact if you are English proficient and also economically disadvantaged. I want to see what those compounding impacts might be. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. First, I want to agree with one of the requests that Mrs. Schultz made, being able to separate out ethnicity and non-English, non-native English speaking, because I think that is an important piece to look at. And then another quick question. When we come to the work session, I would love to see an example of a pacing guide and an example of a rubric. Now, we have to discuss it, but I would like to just see that if it is possible. And I don't know if you can do a comparison of where we have been with that and where we're going, but otherwise, the report very informative, tremendous amount of thoughtful information. I like the way it's organized. I like the way it's laid out. So I look forward to a more in-depth conversation.
We will certainly have examples for you, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
The other thing I would point out, there's a lot more information in the full report. We just had to pick and choose pieces to present to you tonight, so there's a lot more information in the report, so you might want to take a chance to look through that. Also, you may have noted this year that we actually broke down each student group separately. In the past, I believe, we've combined Asian and white students as one and Hispanic and Black as another group, and we just felt like to be a little bit more discreet. We need to look at each separately. So that's, that's something that's a change.
Yes, correct.
Correct. Mr. Stork?
I had two basic questions. One is, I guess I never connected on this, or maybe it's presented in a way that now I see it and I didn't see it before, but I was really surprised that by the end of eighth grade, that only 60% of our students are passing, at least my understanding of this, Algebra I. So I've never, I guess I never got that before. I mean, I look at SOL results, et cetera, and they, so did I miss something?
I don't believe we've ever reported out on it. That was one of the new metrics that we added to our strategic plan. It's just something we need to be looking at.
And the data there has passed the course and the SOL both, because previously, I think there was something that just passed the class, but this is SOL and the class both for that particular score.
I mean, it would be interesting to see if there's any significant difference between the two. Just because I was, I have to admit, I've been following Montgomery County and obviously their ongoing discussions, issues about, and of course, algebra, and of course, math in general, but algebra specifically. And then I see this and I go, wow, I didn't, I never, it never registered with me previously, and the fact that it's declining. And obviously, algebra, or at least the math, is, you can maybe modify the SOL a little bit, but you're essentially going to be doing roughly the same thing each time, so the SOL changes. I know there aren't, there really isn't any for a long time, but, so I just, I was surprised, curious, and I'll be interested in seeing if there's any, any other overall insight from why that might be and what, if anything can be done about it. I just, I just really got my, I don't know, I just never really noticed that. The other thing is desired outcome. You speak of that, actually, it's written here several different places, talking about kind of what that, the culmination would be. And again, maybe I need to be educated further, and if so, then please do it offline, but when I look at outcomes, I always think of something more quantitative, and the descriptions in here, I would be hard-pressed to measure in any specific way, and I think that's trouble. I think it's hard to really see where, if you got there, if you can't have some basis to measure it.
Referencing desired outcomes here, those were the exact wording from the strategic plan, where it listed desired outcome, and I took word for word from there.
I know, and I, and I realize that that was the case, but I, and I guess I'll just say, I just, I have a challenge with that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any specific recommendations you have on that, Dan? Really, you know, every year, we actually have in our schedule kind of a reflection in June around, you know, we're keeping kind of a record of things that we need to change is when we update the plan. So if there's anything, we've certainly expanded the amount of information you're getting on outcomes, but if there are things that we need to improve upon or add, we can certainly do that.
Ms. Darnell Kofat?
Just to be brief, due to the hour of time, thank you so much for your first report. This was quite comprehensive, and thank you for your energy level here at 11 o'clock at night practically. I'll have more questions on the work session, but the one thing that I wanted to, which would probably be easy, but it wasn't referenced, is the examples of the project-based learning that, that you're, the transition, what we're doing in that area. And this may be offline, we can take this, but in my region, I'm curious to see what schools are still without advanced math. And finally, I'm excited to see the proposal of pilot programs at Lee and Stewart. You know, that was a project that I was hopeful that we would initiate, and we have. I'm looking forward to seeing that, and, you know, I think, as you stated with some enthusiasm, that you think this will be a course that will lead us to closing some of the gap in some of these areas, and I'm really excited about that. So talk about it more, but again, thank you for this really wonderful, comprehensive presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I absolutely appreciate the fact that this is incredibly comprehensive and certainly with the late hour. Not only is this not the time to go into great depth, but I do think that there's value to some of the questions my colleagues have been asking that might help enrich the work session. So one of the questions I wanted to ask is, just looking at the slides, the one, I think it says 18 on my iPad, but it was the percent of students successfully completing Algebra I by subgroup. So it was showing economically disadvantaged LEP and students with disabilities. And what I was wondering is, when I saw later in the presentation under reading, I wasn't seeing similar charts where it was broken out by these type of subgroups. So I don't know if it's just because you mentioned that this had to be kind of condensed, and so when we read the full report for all of those charts, we should be seeing one by ethnicity, one by the subgroups? Okay. Because that, I think that's really important, and I would just like to point out to my colleagues, as we're looking through this report, the Algebra I by subgroup is probably, to me, the most alarming when you look at the gaps. And I, I hope at the work session, what part of our dialogue together is the board and leadership team is going to be, you know, not just here's what it is, but what's our understanding of how it could be so stark and so dramatic? And I think it's really important to get to the why, and especially, I'll just note-
Well, we can also talk about what we're doing about it.
Sure, but I just think it's, it's really compelling that if you look in 2011 to 2015, the steep drop that happened for LEP and students with disabilities, but the overall, you know, population, you know, going from 63 to 58 is not that dramatic, but you're going 20 to 13 and 37 to 16, that's, wow. So I do hope we'll have those conversations. And just the other point, I really felt it was important to emphasize tonight in a public meeting, is thank you for delivering the great news about the new hire for dyslexia. And again, Dr. Garza, thank you so much for your leadership and your team's leadership in this area. I think this is tremendous strides for our district and really on behalf of, you know, Decoding Dyslexia and all the parents out there who've shared their stories with us over the years. This is very exciting, and you're to be commended for bringing us there.
Thank you.
And between now and January 11th, if you have other questions that might require some analysis, if you wouldn't mind providing those to us in advance, so in some cases, we may could have, you know, we could possibly have the answer for you at the work session. So I look forward to the discussion, in-depth discussion around all these important pieces of information on January 11th. Thank you, Dr. Ron, and the entire team. You did a great job. We appreciate your efforts in being here so late tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3.08, the FY 2017-2021 Capital Improvement Program. I call on Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. We've had numerous work sessions over this last several years, couple of years, on the capital improvement plan. We just had one last week, or I think it was last week, where we looked at some draft components of the capital improvement plan. That was an added work session that we've not had leading up to the CIP. We've had some continued conversations with members of the board to make sure that the document is reflective of the issues that you felt needed to be reflected. So we received some changes even as late as yesterday, last, was it yesterday evening, I guess? As I mentioned to you tonight, we're not providing hard copies, bound copies of it until we get through the process, and it's fully adopted, finally, you know, officially adopted by you all. And then, as a couple of folks have asked, yes, we will also provide, once it's adopted, copies for our new supervisor, all of supervisors moving forward. I want to compliment Jeff Plattenberg, obviously, and his team, Kevin Sneed and Amy Hollab and Susan Quinn. There've been a lot of people who've done some great work on this document. You'll see that there's been a lot of new information added as resource, some of it information even provided in different places that we've tried to pull into the full report. So I'm very appreciative of the work that's been done here. We do have, in addition to the last session, we do have a work session scheduled to talk about this in much more depth. So for the public that might be listening, you know, there will be an additional conversation, I believe, on January the 20-
11.
January 11th, same, same work session. And then there will be also a public hearing on January the 5th, and then we'll look forward to your final adoption, tenet, you know, we project on January the 21st. So without further delay, I'd like to turn over the program to Jeff Plattenberg. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Well, Madam Chairman, members of the School Board, and Dr. Garza, thank you for letting me present to you this evening. Well, it's that exciting time of the year, right? Filled with all the excitement of the holiday season. And of course, also the capital improvement program, you know? But not only, you've heard about the FCPS strategic plan, Goal One, and the IGNITE, the student success component, but another essential planning document is the capital improvement program, the CIP. In this evening's CIP, we're going to be presenting pretty much a high-level overview. I only have 12 slides to go through of 110-page document. So it is a rather voluminous document, and the volume, as you'll hear me articulate, really represents the growth and the development, the evolution, if you will, of the capital improvement program document. Gone are the days of it just being the cohort survival and other students aging up from grade to grade, and the data reflected in that to be a more comprehensive document. So in this evening's CIP, what we've contained in it is really the improved structure and content, and I'll go through that in just a little bit. We've also have the funding sources and a brief review or overview of what those funding sources are. The school year 2015-2016 student enrollment, additional student enrollment projection data, capital project summary, new construction, capacity enhancements, renovations that are completing, and renovation summary, and then cash flow summary data and pretty much next steps, which Dr. Garza had alluded to at the beginning. So let's begin. Okay. The improved structure and content, if you take a look at this, the new and improved CIP that, as Dr. Garza stated, is online and is evolving and has reflected changes, changes that School Board members and members of the community have been pointing out that needed to be further articulated and clarification provided. It begins with the static information, and that really is essentially background information about Fairfax County Public Schools and where the CIP fits into this overarching, larger picture. These new sections include the capital improvement program overview, which is the present environment, challenges, and essential CIP documents. Those are document pages five through seven. And then it goes into the decision-making framework and process, which is the CIP guiding principles. You've heard about that and been a part of it. The CIP process and cycle, the CIP recommendations, the projection process, the migration of students, the enrollment impacts, the facility capacity assessments, which are on pages nine through 17. And then the following components, the regulation framework sections, which are really the policies and regulations of the School Board and the administrative staff, which are pages 20 to 22. So by having those components, it really does have some basic static or elements that really articulate what the CIP document really entails. Form follows function, the School Board policy envisioning statements, the staff regulations associated with it, all articulating and all encompassed as part of this document, the transparent process and the different types of boundary adjustments that we make and the cycles associated with them. Then we move more into the dynamic information, which is the capital construction, cash flow, which is on page 25, projections, page 29, capacity, page 33, and regional summaries, which is pages 42 through 48. On page 41 of the CIP, something that had been requested by a number of School Board members and members of the community, and also FPAC, the Facilities Planning Advisory Council, that has had a lot of input on the development of both the static and the dynamic components of the CIP, really shows where the priorities that are identified and the recommended boundary adjustments that, of course, are, as Dr. Garza mentioned, subject to provisions, as we've already made, and they're provided also by region. Again, that's page 41. We have a new map on page 71, suggested by FPAC, which shows the special ed centers and alternative high schools. New AAP map on page 76, and that map shows the middle schools that lead into, feed into middle school AAP centers. In the past, we had just shown elementary, because that's the predominance of the discussion that had been held, and our request was, well, why don't you show both? Why don't you show the middle school as well as the elementary? All of this, as, again, our continuing evolution. Other new items continued, really in addition to the capital construction cash flow, we added our tenure forecast, showing the plan of future bonds and the timeline for possible planning, permitting, and construction of each project, and that's on page 28. And the purpose of that, as you recall, was the request for people to understand, okay, it's nice that you do this five-year continuum, this five-year look at what we're on an annual basis, but what's in the offing, and how much does that really entail? And if we're going to look at that, what is the realistic timeframe, the timeframe that that would actually take to come to fruition? As suggested at the work session, behind the alphabetical listing of schools section, we provided charts by region and school showing the number of classroom spaces in modulators and the number of classroom spaces in trailers, and that begins on page 96. As a reminder, modulators count in on a school's capacity, trailers do not. They're used for temporary capacity relief. Some people say temporary seems to be a lot longer term than what their definition is of temporary, but it really does not include the trailers used to support school that are also under construction. So legacy trailers may remain at current locations until there's a need to relocate them or alleviate capacity concerns in other locations. Some trailers hold one classroom space, duplexes hold two, and quads obviously hold four. Additionally, we noted how schools are using the classroom spaces as well. That was some feedback and information that was asked for. So as you can see, this document is a lot more comprehensive than the documents of CIP's past. As requested by the community, the priority recommended boundary adjustments chart, as I mentioned on page 41, has been added to the CIP, and these are tied to capital construction projects and timelines. All boundary adjustments follow transparent practices and procedures, and that's kind of critical. We've had a number of questions from members of the community, and as I mentioned, the board policy and regulations that are provided let the public know, not only on this chart, page 41, what our best thinking is at this time, but also including those policies and regulations of the process associated with going through any boundary adjustment. Our overall student enrollment is impacted each year by net migration, new students to the system, and the number of students who leave the system. And I'm going to get into a little bit of that in just a minute. So our funding sources, real briefly, really, our bond funding. We have a cap, a bond cap for $155 million a year. You've heard a lot of accolades about involvement of members in the Infrastructure Facilities Committee and Finance Committee, and a lot of that discussion was about the capital projects and the need that we have, which is well over $274 million annually. When you have a need of that, that's that great, and we have a cap of 155, the- When you have a need of that, that's that great, and we have a cap of 155, the logical snowballing effect of what your needs outweigh your actual revenues and resources you have are there. But, as a part of that committee, there was a way to identify the 13.1 that's listed down below for infrastructure management at the end annually of the fiscal years. We have the Department of Defense grant where Fort Belvoir, we're very fortunate to have qualified for that grant, and that's underway. And then, we have, I skipped over the operating funds for the minor capacity enhancements and the routine major maintenance, which is really significant in maintaining our infrastructure. Student enrollment for 2015-2016. Well, here's the story, okay? So, what are we really saying? What are we seeing? The student enrollment growth has contracted again this year. We had mentioned last year that we're still growing, but at a contracted rate. Well, that pattern's continuing. There are a number of reasons, a number of belief systems is why that's occurring, some of it having to do with the second level of sequestration, not where the federal government has contracted, but also where the providers to the federal government had contracted, and some of those contractors, those contracts are coming to term. There really isn't a lot of, a lot of true undergirding data to support exactly the speculation that we have on that, but we definitely have the data to support that the contraction of our growth is yet still occurring. We do have a lower birth to kindergarten ratios. For each elementary school tenet area, we have the number of live births that's included in this document that occurred five years prior, and we weigh that against the number of students starting kindergarten to get that ratio. We use the past few years' ratio to make a kindergarten projection each year, and you'll see that on page 31. We show the birth to kindergarten comparisons since 2009 and '10, so anybody that really wants to delve into the data has enough reference information within the document that they can do so. But, that's not all, folks. The other thing we saw is we also saw an actual overall net migration decrease. And net migration means really where you have the number of students that are actually leaving FCPS versus the number of students during the course of the year that come into FCPS. So, what we're actually seeing is we're seeing a decrease in the overall net migration as compared to the 14, 15 school year. And pages 14 and 15 have three new graphs that really, that Mr. Sneed prepared that are really pretty outstanding and do tell a story. Student enrollment projections, oops, I bounced ahead. As you see, since 2009, student enrollment increases by an average of about 2,400 students per year. We do anticipate the growth at the elementary level to moderate in the future due to the lowering birth to kindergarten ratios that I just mentioned, that we've been experiencing. And, as previously I stated, this will lead to most of the future growth to occur at the middle and the high school levels, okay? And what does that mean? What that means is, as grade cohorts age up, if you will, you're seeing the bubbles, the evident tides that you have in demographic speak work through the system. So, we're going to, we believe that we're going to continue to see at the middle and high school levels, and then, for some reason, at the high school level, we seem to have a bump in ninth grade on a general basis. A lot of the discussion about that is people who might have their children in private school or school of choice or homeschool, at that point, they choose to have their students have a broader exposure and expansion because of potential future, perhaps college experience or so forth. So, as grade cohorts move up over the next few years and the trending that we're having is the smaller grade-level cohorts enter the school system in the future, we think that that contraction will continue to be reflected both at the kindergarten level and at the early grades. So, these projections drive the planning for our capital construction into the future, and especially as we anticipate the growth in the areas where surplus capacity may not exist to accommodate future growth. So, now, getting into the capital projects and the new construction. In the, in the document itself, it has a summary page at the beginning, I think it's about page five, but on page 26, you can actually see the summary projects that are provided. We go through, identified in here is Bailey's Upper Elementary School, the gym, the upper school that we built, will be bid in February 2016, and the work is planned to begin in the summer. The Route One Area Elementary School, the design will commence this winter. Fort Belvoir Two, as we're calling it now, is scheduled to open this fall. Northwest County Elementary School, the design work is scheduled to begin later this year, and the total seats gained through the new construction over the next five years is approximately 2,100-plus. And again, that's on page 26 of your document. The summary for capacity enhancements, the next slide, really talks about the South Lakes High School addition. We also have Westboro Elementary School addition, three modular additions, and the additions and modular units represent an additional 750 seats. I'll get to the unfunded and funded projects in just a minute. The capital project summary, overall, the renovations that are being completed, the listing of the schools, Westgate Elementary School, Terracide Elementary School, Woodland Elementary School. The construction and the design and the flow are rather impressive for those schools from where they were in the past. And again, I'll repeat the fact that we have the lowest cost per square foot in the area, in the region, in the state, and the lowest amount of square feet per child. So, we're extremely efficient with our resources. This year, we're going to be completing approximately 353,000 square feet of renovation space, 161,000 square feet of addition, adding approximately 1,250 seats. Rule of thumb that we basically have overall, and I'm almost done, I've got three more slides, the rule of thumb that we have is really, you know, you've got 26 million square feet of physical plant, building space. We usually have about 10% of that under construction each year, or approximately 2.6 million square feet. So, as I said, it's a pretty significant program and predominantly dominated by our renovation, but also the building addition with renovation. So, our capital project summary, if you take a look at the slide that's presented before you here, it really shows that we currently have a construction, under construction, 1.2 million square feet of renovation, 617,000 square feet of addition, or a total of about 1.8 million square feet, adding about 2,640 seats. This year, we're going to be bidding another four renovation projects for about 483,000 square feet, and renovation of about 150,000 square feet, or a total of, approximately adding 600 additional seats. And you can see the ones that are planned to be bid, that are in planning, the ones under construction, and then also the ones that are under construction or in planning itself. The cash flow summary, really, the total five-year requirement is funded of 429 million, roughly, and unfunded 348 million. The total 10-year requirement is quite a bit larger than that, as you'll see below on slide 11. So, the final slide, and I'm sure you're really excited about that, is our next steps. So, what's coming up next? Obviously, this evening's presentation, Dr. Garza mentioned, the meeting that we had already had previously on this, and then, we do have the public hearing, as was mentioned, on January 5th, and we have a work session Monday, January 11th, and action, hopefully, on the 21st of January. Again, I want to thank you for giving me this brief opportunity to really kind of go through that. I know it's late in the evening, and I know you've been dying to get to the CIP with all the other excitement we've had tonight, but we do have a lot of time for a lot of feedback. We have been getting a lot of feedback, which is a good thing. I think that speaks to the fact that the hard work that the entire team has done, including FPAC, including staff, Kevin Sneed, Amy Hollab, Ms. Quinn, and the rest of the crew, really making sure that it is both the static, the bookends of regulation policy, how does it fit in the overarching scheme of FCPS, but also the elements of the data and the technical components of trailers, locations, sites, where school sites are, and then, of course, the dynamic data, that is the projection data that's included each year. I think it's making it a much more telling, usable document, and again, it is a continuous improvement process that we're under. We've been getting a lot of good feedback, and I'm sure there will be a lot of changes. I know we have a number of things that are currently underway, that are going on in terms of discussions in the community, and all of that feedback is hopefully going to be incorporated in this document. So, that concludes my brief presentation this evening. I want to thank you for that, and I'm open to either any questions, or I'll be happy to sit down and take any questions by email.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Plattenberg. We have had a lot of time to talk about this, and we will have the work session in January. So, I think we can probably, oh, one brief comment from Ms. Reeve.
I just wanted to thank you and all the staff. This is excellent, and when I reflect six years ago, I mean, it's not even the same document anymore. It's so much more useful and in a way that I think whether you're a member of the community or you're a board member, it's just, it's so easy now to kind of find the information, whereas before, I felt that it really wasn't helpful to the reader. And so, I mean, this is forest and trees. If you want the big picture, it's here, and if you want the details, it's here also. But, I really wanted to compliment you, and I also see in the report a reflection of some of our discussions and suggestions, and I really think that this is an outstanding document, and I really just wanted to thank everybody for their efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Reeve.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Great job. Team, wonderful. Thank you.
All right. We are at action items. Item 4.01, the fiscal year 2016 mid-year budget review. I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to approve the revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the FY 2016 mid-year budget review as detailed in the agenda item presented as new business on December 3rd and discussed at the December 7th work session.
So, second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Would you like to speak?
It's been discussed several times.
Okay. All right, seeing no discussion. Those in favor, raise your hand. Darrenet Kofax, McElvein, Smith, Strauss, Stork, Evans, Hines, Moon, Reed, and Velkoff, those opposed, and those abstaining, McLaughlin and Schultz, the motion passes. Item 4.02, and I think we have some diehard folks still waiting for us to act on this one. Thank you. The name change policy. I call on Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the proposed revision to policy 8170.5, naming school facilities and dedicating area schools, facilities, or grounds to allow for the renaming of school facilities, not only for a change in use of the facility, but also for a compelling need, presented as new business on December 3rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moon seconds. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just very briefly, I had brought this to the forum in November. When we looked at the possibility of a name change at schools, we realized that our current policy states that a facility, a school can be changed, the name can be changed only if the use of the facility changes, and this modest revision would enable the school board to change the name of a school if there was, if the school board deemed that there was a good reason to do so. So, I asked my colleagues for their support, and thank you to the community members who came out and both testifying and who stayed with us tonight.
Mr. Moon?
Nothing to add.
Okay, have Ms. McLaughlin, please.
Because we can't comment when speakers are at the podium, I just wanted to be able to take this opportunity to let the Stewart community know how much I've greatly appreciated the very thoughtful, knowledgeable, and passionate input that you've brought to this discussion over time. For me, as a board member, where this hasn't been a front and center conversation, the perspective that you've been able to bring to something that all 12 of us, as you're about to see, are going to need to vote on, was very meaningful, and I felt that you also did a remarkable job of being extremely respectful in the dialogue, because this is obviously a very passionate issue. And having been a history major as an undergraduate and a long line of history majors in my family, you know, I don't take lightly when we look at an issue like this and what's, what do we do? So, to Ms. Evans, I want to thank you first of all, because I think this is an appropriate step, and this is enabling our board, then, to work with our community and really look at what is the right thing to do and what is the best way to make sure that we honor our community. And I will also say what's been very influential to me is that Georgetown University recently undertook this very challenging conversation with its community about some buildings that had been long named after very illustrious Jesuit presidents of the university, and they're choosing to change the names of those buildings because of who, those individuals, the actions they took and did not take when they should have, and it doesn't reflect what Georgetown believes is its, its character and its values. And so, I look forward to this first step, Ms. Evans, and I know that we'll have some future steps, and I would encourage the community to continue to do your remarkable job of helping us in this journey, and I just, again, want to thank you, and I'm sorry for the late hour, but I hope you'll find it was worth the time.
Mr. Velkoff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting this policy change that's been brought forward by Ms. Evans. It will enable us to achieve what I regard as two goals that have been expressed. Those two goals that I heard, and I certainly agree with them, are repudiating the racism and segregation that was in Virginia in past, past, present, and future. The second is to honor the contribution of Thurgood Marshall as a Fairfax County resident to combat and eradicate those things. I will throw out some advice to the board, to the community, future board members. I hope that you can be wary of conflating specific potential changes with these two goals. Remember, it's eradicating the racism and honoring Thurgood Marshall. There are some things that are going to come up if we get tied to specific solutions, one of which is Civil War history. And interestingly, you know, if it's Stewart but not Lee, then there's going to need to be an explanation, and if Lee is included in there, now you're talking about a lot more stuff. So, remember, Civil War history is complicated. Second thing, and this will seem a little bit mundane, but I suspect there will be some discussion, we'll be talking about Thurgood Marshall. We already have George C. Marshall High School, and it might create some difficulty. Maybe we can get past it, but the fact that we would have two Marshall High Schools, I think, could potentially be a stumbling block. On the other hand, I would see no problem at all in naming a middle school or an elementary school after Thurgood Marshall. In fact, this policy will enable us to do something like that if that is, if the high school naming issue becomes, becomes the stumbling block. Finally, I do want to comment on what I heard from the NAACP, because they rightly singled out Woodson High School. Let's remember that Woodson was a superintendent for about 30 years when Fairfax County had segregated schools. The real blight in Virginia history, I said, the Civil War is complicated. To me, the blight on Virginia history is not complicated, and that's what happened in the early 20th century in segregation in the Virginia Constitution of 1902. And although it's not as well-known to the community who Woodson was, and I know nothing about the man, but he presided over this system when it was segregated, and, you know, my advice to you would be to certainly take a look at that one. So, I appreciate your indulgence in allowing me to give you a pre-mortem here or something.
Mrs. Schultz?
So, as a holder of a bachelor's degree in, in two forms, one in political science and one in history, I am not one to take lightly being in favor of, pardon the inappropriate pun, but whitewashing history. I'll support the change in this policy, but I want us to be very careful. Mr. Velkoff started to intimate the problems of, you know, where do you unravel it? Where do you stop the unraveling of the sweater? And I go to my alma mater, James Madison University, where James Madison didn't release his slaves on his deathbed in his will. So, you know, now are we throwing out James Madison University's name, too? Are we changing road names? What's the cost that's associated? What's to be gained instead of the victory of walking out of a school every day? What's to be gained instead of the victory of walking out of a school every day thinking, oh, well, look at us walking out of this school and graduating from this school and going on to college and doing great things and becoming judges and lawyers and police officers? So, I would be very trepidatious of, of acting on something other than a policy change itself, which I don't like because I think this, this sets us up for some very difficult things. And I will unabashedly share what I shared with Ms. Hohn earlier, which is exactly what Mr. Belkoff brought up. There's no way we're going to have two Marshall High Schools. So, I, I would just quell that right now. I mean, I can't even imagine the complications that that would create. Not that Thurgood Marshall isn't great, and in fact, if I remember correctly, Ms. Evans, didn't we talk about Bailey's, naming Bailey's upper Thurgood Marshall?
Yes, that was one of the names.
Yeah, that was one of our, and I was in favor of that. So, I can't envision that in the least, so I would, you know, use your advocacy otherwise. And what I suggested is the institutor of the National Martin Luther King Day, let's go with Ronald Wilson Reagan High School. Oh, yeah, neither of it is like that quite so much, you know, but, but isn't it fascinating that that's who instituted us and gave us that national holiday? And if we want to talk about somebody who reaches across an aisle and sets an example and says, this is what we're going to do as a nation and move the conversation forward. But there are more complications than solutions in two Marshall High Schools. But I'll start with, with supporting this policy and look forward to ongoing conversation.
Mr. McElvein?
So, just to clarify for the public tonight, we are not debating names. That, that goes through an extensive community process, so we don't need to discuss that tonight. The issue that I have with this policy is it remains a mess. Even with these changes tonight, I do support these changes, but there remains a lot of work that we need to do as a system to clean this up, particularly the, the piece about naming areas within schools and our ability to offer naming rights for donors and things like that. So, I know in the coming months we will do that, but I do support Ms. Evans' effort tonight.
Mr. Press?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo the sentiments that I've heard so far, but I do want to add to the conversation by saying that I think it's important that this board recognize and expand its power to exercise its fiduciary responsibility to the community. At the end of the day, these community, these schools are the community's schools. If the community comes forward and feels that the school's name does not reflect the values of that community, it's this board's duty to recognize those, those concerns, and if the community so, and board so agree, move forward and act on those. So, you know, I would strongly urge board members to support this measure. I thank Ms. Evans for bringing it forward. I also want to mention our student leaders on this issue. We're here earlier tonight. I completely understand they needed to get home. It's a school night, and it's 11:30 PM when we're getting to this issue, but I want to thank them and mention to other students of the community and all community members just how incredibly involved and what role models these students have been in bringing this issue forward, following it through, and, and keeping with the process as it moves, moves through all the motions. So, I just want to thank them for that, and again, I urge members to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say quickly, I also support this, and I think this is the easy part, right? The hard part is going to be the next conversation, and you've already had a little taste of that here perhaps. But I think it is very important that the community understand, we right now at this board are making no decisions about what the name will be, and nobody at this board can say, we're not even going to consider a certain name. That's, that's not our job right now. It's up to the community, and this policy just allows us to have those very important community conversations. So, thanks so much to the advocates, as, as Mr. Press said, especially the students. I want them to feel encouraged and empowered by what we do here tonight because the next step is going to involve them a great deal, I hope. We really hope that they lead the next part of the conversation. So, if there's no other comments, we will go ahead and take the vote. The motion is to, to approve the proposed revision to policy 8170.5, naming school facilities and dedicating areas of school facilities or grounds to allow for the renaming of school facilities, not only for a change in use of the facility but also for a compelling need presented as new business on December 3rd. I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right. All right. For item 4.03, I am going to hand the gavel to Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hines, I will recognize you to make a motion.
Thank you. And I will actually have what I hope is two motions. Assuming the first motion passes, we'll move quickly to the second one. I first want to make, I move that the meeting agenda, tonight's meeting agenda, be amended to include consideration of authorizing the chairman of this board to sign a letter on behalf of the board from the, Virginia's Urban Crescent as detailed in the agenda item.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Strauss seconds. Ms. Hines, would you like to explain?
Yes, thank you. I just, the reason that I'm asking to amend the agenda at this late date, I apologize for that, but Ms. Strauss and I attended with Dr. Garza the Urban Crescent meeting just last Friday, and one of the takeaways from that meeting was that all of the school systems represented there would sign a letter that has to be signed before our next meeting in January, and we only received the letter, yes, two days ago. So, we did not have time to put this on the agenda ahead of time as we usually do. So, just requesting the board's indulgence for us to add this to the agenda tonight.
Mrs. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
I think it's very straightforward. It's basically asking the state for more money for schools.
With that, if there's no more discussion, oh, Mrs. McLaughlin?
I just wanted to share with Ms. Hines that in reading the letter, I am extremely pleased that the urban jurisdictions are coming forward with very powerful and collective voices on this issue, and very, very happy to support this board's signature to that letter. I think it's very important, and for my colleagues, if you haven't had a chance to see it yet, it's extremely well-written and really speaks to the point. So, I'm, I think it's definitely something we want to put our signature on.
And with that, I'm going to read the motion. I move that the meeting agenda be amended, that's what we're doing now, this step, to include consideration of authorizing the chairman to sign a letter on behalf of the board from Virginia's Urban Crescent as detailed in the agenda item. All in favor? The vote is unanimous. Thank you. And I will call on Mrs. Hines for the main motion.
Thank you. So, now we get to the, the substance of it. And I move to authorize the chairman to sign a letter on behalf of the school board from Virginia's Urban Crescent as detailed in the agenda item, calling upon the governor and the 2016 Virginia General Assembly to increase the Commonwealth's share of funding for a high-quality public education system.
I have a second. Mrs. Strauss?
Okay. I think this has already been spoken to quite eloquently by Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you. And it was, but I do, and maybe, I don't know if Ms. Strauss or Dr. Garza want to speak to it as well. I think it was important for all of the local electeds from Northern Virginia and the Hampton Roads area to get together, representing about 70% of the population of Virginia, and to speak with one voice to the General Assembly and the governor on the, the very dire need for the state of Virginia to improve its funding of K-12 education. So, I think this is something that our board should definitely join in.
Mrs. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I think Ms. Hines summarized it just fine.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I do think for anyone who's watching now or maybe ends up going back to watch, I just, I did want to add a few things that are in the letter that it's going to include more than 150 government school divisions and business representatives who are considering this joint position. But most importantly, what people need to be aware of, since fiscal year 2009, the Commonwealth of Virginia has reduced its share of funding for public education by more than $1 billion. In addition, state funding per pupil, inflation adjusted, has decreased from $4,275 per pupil in fiscal year 2009 to $3,655 per pupil. I, I think it's really important that as a result, Virginia local governments are contributing double the amount required under current statute for public education. So, when you look at the fact that in comparison to other states, Virginia is the top 10 per capita and median household income, but it's in the bottom 10 for public education. So, I do hope that as a board, we will take these bullet points and actually continue to share them through our newsletters and our PTAs to really send a strong message down to Richmond and support our governor that it is long past time that as Virginia moves out of the recession, it is time to put that funding back into public education.
Dr. Garza, did I see your hand?
I'll be very brief. I just want you all to know, I'll be signing it because superintendents were also asked to sign, so I'll be signing it.
And I would just say that I want to thank Ms. Hines and Mrs. Strauss and Dr. Garza for participating in this. It's an excellent step forward for collaboration on, on this important issue. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. The motion passes, and I will now turn the gavel back over to Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Okay. Item 4.04, confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting earlier tonight. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended actions. I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who brought controlled substances, marijuana and drug paraphernalia to school with the intention of distributing at least one of the controlled substances and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor? McElvein, Smith, Strauss, Stork, Evans, Hines, Moon, Reed, and Belkoff. All those opposed? Abstaining? Darrenat Kofax, McLaughlin, and Schultz. Next, I call on Ms. Strauss again for a motion.
Thank you. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with a serious criminal offense related to an alleged community-based incident and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
I second. Seconded by Ms. Reed. All those in favor, raise your hand. McElvein, Smith, Strauss, Stork, Hines, Moon, Reed, and Belkoff. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Darrenat Kofax, Evans, McLaughlin, and Schultz. That motion passes. I call on Ms. Reed for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who brought marijuana and a knife to school and who also came to school under the influence of marijuana and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. McElvein, Smith, Strauss, Stork, Evans, Hines, Moon, Reed, Schultz, and Belkoff. Those opposed? McLaughlin, those abstaining? Darrenat Kofax. The motion passes. And finally, I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to grant in part the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and distributed a controlled substance and to modify the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second? Okay. Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. All those in favor, raise your hand. McElvein, Strauss, Stork, Evans, Hines, Moon, McLaughlin, and Schultz. All those opposed? Smith, Reed, and Belkoff abstaining? Darrenat Kofax. Okay, that motion passes. All right. Item 5, the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 5.02, approve proposed restated plan documents for ERFC and ERFC 2001 for submission to the Internal Revenue Service with the application for a current determination letter. 5.03, authorize staff to negotiate professional services contracts with selected firms for architectural design of capital construction projects and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer contracts on behalf of the school board. 5.04, confirm the separations for the period beginning November 1, 2015, and ending November 30, 2015, as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item 6, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, FY 2017-2021 Capital Improvement Program. Approve the FY 2017-2021 Capital Improvement Program. 6.02, approve the strategic plan Goal 1, Student Success Strategies 1 and 2, as detailed in the agenda item. Item 7, superintendent matters. I call on Dr. Garza.
Because of the lateness, due to how late it is tonight, I'm going to pass, except to say, as we enter the holiday season, I certainly want to wish all of our students' families a very wonderful and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8.01, board committee reports. I call on Mr. Moon to report on governance committee.
Okay, thank you. Let me first talk about the retreat which we had last Saturday, December 12th, at the Presidential Library of George Washington in Bonbon District. The, that retreat included four newly elected board members along with the returning board members. We, you know, got to know each other a little better from the retreat, and board had a self, board discussed about board self-evaluation and also role of the school board and school board members on the strategic plan and along with a potential restructuring of board's committee discussion. And on the following Monday, which was December 14th, governance committee had a follow-up discussion of some of the retreat topics.
Thank you. I call on Ms. Strauss for a report on budget and audit.
We passed the mid-year budget review, and I think that is that. We had an audit committee meeting last night. We had an update on various activities. We're accepting applications for summer interns who'll be working on the school activity fund audits, the effective and efficient use of bond fund audit, and the asset management audit. It is in process. They're still working on changes to draft and management responses, claims management. There's, they are set to start doing field work in January, and the business process turnover audits. Ms. Trump and along with the superintendent's staff have worked on priority basis of those business process turnover audits, who will be looked at in the next months, and so that will be forthcoming. And then we had a long discussion of audit and program evaluation. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McElvein, do you have a report on public engagement committee?
Public engagement committee spoke about CIP engagement and also on the student leadership development program.
Thank you. And Ms. Smith for a work session update?
So, we had a work session, and I forgot the first topic that you did.
CIP.
Oh, the CIP presentation. We had a first work session, so that's in process. And then we had a presentation about the compensation study and had a report about the teacher compensation, so that is on the December 7th work session. People want to see the details.
Okay. Thank you. Item 9.01, board matters. We will start with Mr. Belkoff. Mrs. Schultz?
Merry Christmas. Pass.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Pass it on.
I wish everybody a wonderful holiday season, and especially to my colleagues. It's been a long but successful 2015, so Happy New Year to you, and I hope you get lots of sleep somewhere along the way.
Ms. Reed?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and it's
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and it's been a pleasure.
Mr. Moon?
Congratulations to Westfield Bulldogs, winning state. I'm sorry. Okay, I'll leave that to you, Mrs. Smith.
Okay, Ms. Evans?
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody. See you in the new year.
Mr. Stork?
I just want to thank my colleagues again for the pleasure of serving with you and, and thank my constituents for giving me the opportunity to serve and, and frankly, the staff, the teachers, the custodians, the bus drivers, the, especially the elementary school counselors for their great service to our kids and frankly, the, just the amazing work that, that everybody does every day to make this such an awesome institution and one that is, I know will continue to shine, but I realize it takes all of us to, to be pulling in the same direction to make that happen. So it has truly been an honor. Thank you. And I am, I'm deeply saddened by departing, but at the same time, I've, I've sure enjoyed the ride. So thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah Past, and everybody have a wonderful holiday with your families and your friends. And I hope everybody's rested and will be ready to come back after the new year. Thanks.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Since Westfield is the only high school physically in Sully District, we have one. We were at the state championship game. The game ended 28 to 28 tie, three overtimes. They won 49 to 42. And since I will be a supervisor, I will be able to bring them to the meeting. Yes. Thank you.
Why don't we do that? Mr. McElvein?
So I enjoy driving Ms. Smith and Mr. Moon down to the game. I will say that Mr. Moon's behavior in the car is not appropriate, but happy holidays, everyone. See you in 2016.
Ms. Darnett, Kofax?
Happy holidays. Enjoy your break and to all a good night.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.